Good afternoon. Now I'd like to bring the special meeting for the purpose of our budget discussion to order. And the first item is adoption, is a motion to adopt and receive the agenda items. Kind of a motion, please.
Fill the room.
Counsel Ferguson, second by Counsel Davis. All those in favor? Posed and carried. And we start off with presentations. We have a presentation from staff regarding the Willoughby arterial road completion amenity policy. So, Mr. Backen.
Thank you, your worship. WRCAP, as it's presently called, is something we've been working on for some time. It has had many iterations, I think, as we go forward. And I believe with a little luck, we may finally be able to put it in a context that'll make it more readily and easily understandable. Mr. Seffi, did you wish to introduce?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Backen and your worship. As referenced on council's agenda, your worship, the clerk's note identifies the fact that this presentation is in response to council's direction that was provided to staff on January the 13th of this year. And it relates to the draft policy that is known as the Willoughby arterial road completion amenity policy, otherwise known as WRCAP. Your worship, while the primary intent is to respond to council's direction, staff felt it would be appropriate to provide a bit of a refresher in terms of the history and the background of the process that we've been on over the past nine months or so, about a year. And with that, provide some highlights of, I guess, the policy itself as it currently stands, including the amendments that were put forward and then, I guess, referred to staff for this presentation. As well as some of the significant implications that staff have been highlighting to council as part of staff's presentations to council and reports to date. So with that, beginning with the most recent council direction that was provided, as I said, on January 13th, it said that staff be directed to provide counsel as part of the 2020 budget process for its further consideration and explanation and review of the amendments to WRCAP that were proposed and defeated on December 2nd as part of council's regular evening meeting. A brief outline of the history, going back to February of last year, council confirmed its top six priorities, which included exploring options for alternate major road funding models. Then, on April the 8th, Councilor Woodward submitted a memorandum to council, which presented a proposed approach to facilitate completion of key sections of the arterial road network in Willoughby, with the potential to apply a similar model for Brookswood and Fenrich. Then on April the 15th of last year, council directed staff to complete an analysis and report on implications of adopting such a policy as soon as practical. Following which, on July the 8th, council received a report from staff on WRCAP, which included the analysis of financial, technical, and legal implications. And going forward, your worship, for the purposes of this presentation, we're going to be calling this WRCAP 1. This is the July 8th version. Then on July 22nd, council directed staff to bring forward a revised policy with a reduced amenity target contribution amount by removing specific sections of the road network as presented in the previous policy. And then also, staff was directed to proceed with engagement of the stakeholders, i.e. the development industry and the public at large. On September 5th, again, 2019, council received a memorandum with the revised draft policy, which we refer to as WRCAP 2, as per the previous council direction. And it was used for the purposes of consulting with the development industry and the public at large. During September and October of the following months, there were meetings held with the development industry, specific meetings, as well as open houses for the public, as well as online survey, which resulted input from over 650 individuals, at least 650 responses, maybe not distinct individuals, but 650 responses. Following that process of seeking input and receiving input, then another report was presented to council on November the 18th, which we will refer to as WRCAP 3, and presented the revised policy based on the feedback that had been received. Council did consider, but did not approve, the amendments to the revised policy, which essentially aimed to maintain the current practice of acquiring the road dedications, reimbursing development proponents. These were the amendments that were put forward, but were not adopted. So these were the outline of the amendments. To maintain the current practice, to reimburse the development proponents as part of the program, as possible, as the program allows, subject to actual costs with no net cost to township, and then to reintroduce sections of the road that were previously removed. They were included, but then removed subsequently. So revert back to the WRCAP 1 version. So these were the amendments that were put forward, but not approved by council. So then, I guess, we expected this presentation to occur at the last meeting, hence the January 13th, but it was, council did not have the time to receive it. So now, I guess, whatever date we are, February 3rd, presentation as part of the budget process, I apologize, that direction was actually provided by council to staff on January 13th. I apologize. So that was to actually do the presentation, which we are doing today, and we call that with the amendments, WRCAP 4. So again, just to recap, WRCAP 1 was July 8th, WRCAP 2 was September 5th, which was essentially removing some components. WRCAP 3, another further reduction, and then WRCAP 4, reintroduction of sections, as well as incorporation of some fundamental principles, policies. Very briefly, the Local Government Act provides the direction, or the empowerment, not the direction, but the provision, that local governments, municipalities essentially can do two things as part of their powers, they're empowered to do two things. One is to require the provision of works and services, both for offsite works and onsite works. These are essentially works and services that are needed to support a particular development. And then the other part of what we can do, and these are related to, I must, I guess, preface that, this is not in the grand scheme of things in terms of what a municipality can do, but rather in relation with development applications, this is what we can do. And that the first part being the provision of works and services, the second part being a collection of fees and charges. And that second component, Part B, has several parts, permit fees, which generally go towards our cost to administer the process, and then DCCs, et cetera, which are required to offset the costs of major trunk services, and those typically relate to arterial roads, as well as neighborhood-level parks, and trunk sewers, and water systems. Payment of fees and charges relate to growth, as I said, and major categories are roads, sewage, drainage, water, and parks. And then the other part that is not specifically recognized in the provision of legislation, but has been relied upon by local governments, and the province recognizes that that was in fact the intent, is the section that talks about and discusses density bonus provisions. And what has been happening over the past decade or so is municipalities relying on these provisions to negotiate what are known as community amenity contributions, to do with things that are not provided for as part of DCCs, generally specifically talking about such things as affordable housing, fire halls and libraries, recreation facilities, and other non-DCC items. We are very careful about the language that is used, and these are contributions and not fees or charges, because of the, I guess, the context being the regulatory context, as well as the history of legal precedents in the province in terms of, I guess, the challenges that may have occurred. So these are target contributions, and there are essentially two ways of securing them. So these two ways are, once we have a policy, is how we actually implement the policy. And that's either through a phased development agreement, which is historically what we have been doing with respect to greenways, and more recently, with respect to contributions towards other community amenity, other community amenities that council has identified and approved, and going forward could be used for the WRCAP policy. And then the other way that it could be done is through a bonus density, which is a zoning bylaw amendment process. So these are the two, primary tools that are at the disposal of local governments with respect to implementation of CACs. As I said earlier, the amenities themselves cannot be included in the DCC program, and may include such things as public spaces, public art, recreation facilities, fire halls, affordable housing, but not roads, drainage, sewer, and water facilities, to the extent that the costs related to those facilities are already included in the DCC program. What I mean by that is, our DCC program does not include a land component in the developing areas, with the assumption that the land can be negotiated and acquired at no cost to township at time of development. Therefore, the cost of the land can be included in a policy that, such as the one that is being contemplated, being the WRCAP. So in terms of how does the actual policy work, the calculations of it, we must, in all cases, whether it's DCC, which has a more structured and regulatory approach to it, as well as CACs, we don't necessarily have a structure and a proposed approach to them, we must be very transparent and provide what is known as a nexus in terms of the relationship between the charges and what it is that the community is going to be receiving in terms of amenities. So there has to be a calculation that demonstrates how that is achieved, the number, the target contributions are achieved. And my intent with this slide is just generally, at a very high level, indicate to council how the number will ultimately be arrived at, and that is by, first part, calculating the total acquisition cost based on an assumed current market value cost per acre. So that's Part A. Then, the area that is going to be subject to the policies has to be defined. So once you define that, then the denominator of the equation is Part B, which is really the lands that are still to be developed, that will then be subject to the policy. So then, by dividing one by the other, A divided by B, you arrive at the target contribution amount. Other policy elements include the fact that, to arrive at the WRCAP rate, contributions collected are to be used to acquire the land necessary, which together with the DCCs would then allow for the construction of the arterial sections of the road. The intent being that the policy is to assist with the construction of certain sections of the road, and again, keeping in mind, one of the fundamental principles of such policies is that you cannot double-count something, nor can you charge for it twice. So what I mean by that is, if a developer, as part of the application, is actually providing the land that is needed for widening the road, and that cost has already been included in the calculation of the WRCAP, then the developer is entitled to a reimbursement, if you will, or a netting out of the cost from his otherwise payable WRCAP amount. It is also important to note that the WRCAP in itself provides for a systematic and consistent approach in collecting of the funds, but does not, again, in itself, does not provide for the expenditure of the funds that are then being collected. What I'm suggesting by that is that council, we need to consider, subsequent, if in fact this policy is to be adopted subsequently, another consideration by council will be its implementation through other means, potentially, or other strategies, I should say. Other considerations that need to be borne in mind, and as I said, they have been discussed in previous reports, but just to highlight for council, the idea, the intent is for council to, as part of this policy, to address traffic congestion. But one thing that has been stressed out in all of their communications from the province, they have actually developed a guide. It is hard to, I guess, describe it as a best practices guide, but it is a guideline that talks about the need for a council to be mindful of the impact of such policies on housing affordability. So that is something that council needs to keep in mind, and the potential, I guess, impact in terms of land values on housing affordability. In terms of technical implications, this is something that staff has discussed before. And it's important to note that the need for consideration of underground utilities, that will not be addressed as part of a WRCAP being considered. What we mean by that is, should council decide that, in fact, post-WRCAP adoption, or a WRCAP-type policy adoption, should council wish to proceed with actually implementing the WRCAP? So lots of ifs here. Should council wish to proceed with implementation, and in fact, construction of a certain section of the road? The WRCAP policy does not provide for considerations around underground utilities. So, other than the drainage, which must be considered in terms of dealing with runoff from a road, we will not necessarily know whether the size of pipe that has to go underground to address the needs of development in the future, as development occurs, whether it's a four-inch, six-inch, eight-inch, or 10-inch pipe, and we would not have a way of providing that underground utility as part of the road construction. What that means is essentially twofold, there will be a higher expense of providing that utility at a future date, because there's always some savings, some efficiencies, cost savings, with being able to do two things at the same time, i.e. put the underground utility in before you build the road, there's a cost component, and there's also the, I guess, the public nuisance component in that a brand-new road potentially would have to be dug up for the purposes of installing an underground utility. As I said, the legal mechanism for us to implement is another consideration, and has implications with staff resources in terms of tracking these things. In particular, I will explain that a bit more in detail when I get to one of my slides, in terms of, I guess, being able to track something that may happen now, what the costs are at a future date when we go back to rebate or reimburse a developer or landowner for the fact that we were able to acquire the land at no cost. So those things have to be borne in mind. And then the financial implications as to whether we want to build something now, once we have the policy adopted, or whether we want to do it at a future date, at a later date, once a certain amount of funds has been collected and set aside.
Mr. Seffi, as I think you're approximately halfway through, perhaps just to summarize at the highest level, arterial roads are really built as a result of, as they are now, as a result of DCC contribution and developer-contributed assets. And when those are built, they usually include the utilities. So if you will, when one takes developer-contributed assets, takes DCCs, it equals arterial roads, but later, because of course it takes some time to build those up. Is that a good, fair summary for the first step?
Yep.
Second step then is, what if we want to do it now? That's where WRCAP comes in, and this is conceptual. In the WRCAP situation, we take the WRCAP, I guess, policy, and ultimately funds, and we could actually then add that to DCCs, add that to developer-contributed assets, and that equals arterial roads sooner, I suppose is one way of saying it, much sooner than if we waited. The only challenge with that is, that may mean there's some ancillary costs for replacement of the utilities, either ahead of time we're going back to dig up the road.
That's correct.
Yeah. So with that difference, we see what WRCAP actually does. Then there's two issues within WRCAP, one is the policy, and one is the funding. And of course, I didn't say sooner, I said sooner, not now, because of course it takes some time to build up the WRCAP funding mechanism. If one wanted it done now, there's ways of actually approaching that, but that may mean borrowing either internally or externally, or some other financing mechanism. But WRCAP is really focusing on allowing the advance of arterial roads sooner than it would happen in our traditional system.
I think it's a fair, I guess, deduction to make, not an assumption, but a deduction to make, but I want to make sure that it's clear that it's not in itself an instrument to build anything. It is just for the collection of, for the purpose of collecting funds.
It would take, once you have those funds or the mechanism to fund it, one can then go and build it, but there's a separate step, which is the procurement step.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, your worship, just providing pictorially, I guess, a summary of the four versions of WRCAP that the public and council has seen. So we begin with the July 8th version, WRCAP 1, which had, as you can see, the 212th Street Connector, 86th Avenue, as well as 200th Street, sections within it. Then as part of WRCAP 2, staff was directed to remove certain sections, and the ones that are listed there were eliminated. As part of WRCAP 3, a further section was eliminated, which was 86th Avenue, so you can see just flipping back and forth between WRCAP 2 and 3. And then finally, with WRCAP 4, we are reverting back to WRCAP 1, but we're also adding another section, which is 72nd Avenue, from 202A to 208th Street. So this is WRCAP 1, which is being maintained, with the addition of 72nd Avenue from 202A Street to 208. So that's what the summary looks like, in terms of the various road sections, and the four different iterations of WRCAP. And as you recall, in my previous discussions, that was just Part 1, or Part A, calculating the cost, and then finding out the area that will be subject to the policy, that is Part B. And this is the map that has been accompanying all of the various versions of WRCAP. And I have to, I guess, also advise council at this stage that there may have been some properties that may have developed over the past nine months, which we have not, I guess, the map has not been updated to reflect. So there could be some minor modifications, but overall, the estimate currently, and again, emphasize draft estimate, is approximately 900 acres of land that will be subject to the WRCAP policy going forward. So again, keeping in mind the draft and preliminary nature of the exercise to date, WRCAP 1 was approximately 16 acres of land required to complete our roads. WRCAP 2, 11; WRCAP 3, 10; and WRCAP 4, which has a 23-acre approximate area need, which translates to at a rate of $3.2 million per acre, which is, based on the best information we have available, the current market value, equates to the numbers you can see, with WRCAP 4 being $74 million, which then dividing by 900 acres of land, equates to $82,000 per acre for WRCAP 4. Again, these numbers to be fine-tuned and verified as part of a subsequent process, if council was to direct staff to proceed. Moving forward, in terms of the implementation, as I said earlier, we have the option of proceeding now, which, as Mr. Backen referenced, and as one of the staff reports earlier on did also highlight, would require borrowing, because there is no account, or at least there are no reserves having been built previously, so we're starting from scratch. We can choose to collect simply now and build later at a future date, or we can proceed on a hybrid, I guess, approach, strategy, and not necessarily build everything at the same time at a future date when we have all of the, whatever the number might be, but rather selective, be selective in our approach, and build certain sections once we have some funding set aside, or a combination of funding and borrowing set aside. One of the challenges discussed earlier with implication is aimed to be discussed with this slide, your worship, so bear with me as I highlight why I have done what I have done in terms of selecting three parcels, just for discussion purposes. That's all this is. If the owners of those parcels are in the room, or people who have interest in these parcels are in the room, it is just for discussion purposes, that's the only intent, nothing else. So as you can see, one is fronting two sections of arterial road, that assuming WRCAP 4 is successful, front a piece of road that they must then be responsible for, or are responsible for in terms of the dedication, expectation of dedicating those as part of a development process, as is parcel 2. Parcel 2 also fronts a certain section, albeit not, you know, on both sides, but rather on one side. And then we have parcel 3, which does not have an arterial road frontage. All of these parcels are subject to WRCAP. Again, the assumption being that the WRCAP in one version or another will get approved, then if that is, I guess, a correct assumption, then the three parcels will be subject to the WRCAP policy. What that would mean is that at time of development, at time of rezoning, there will be a target contribution amount that will be expected of them prior to council considering the rezoning application. Now while parcel 3 can be, I guess, taken off our discussion for now, in terms of its complicating impact on a proposed policy and its tracking for future purposes, 3 will just pay their contribution and they'll carry on, and assuming all other aspects of their proposed development is successful, council will grant it three readings, and final reading, and they can proceed with a contribution of, that's my next table, so parcel 3 will have contributed, because parcel 3 is 2.3 acres, and they have no road frontage, the target contribution is $200,000, and they'll contribute that, and there's no issues in terms of a calculating of a rebate. Now parcel 1 is 4.6 acres, and again, this is based on WRCAP 4, which has a number of $82,000 in it per acre, it works out to approximately $400,000 of a contribution target. And just bear with me, before we move on to the other columns, parcel 2 has an area of 6.2, and a target contribution of $500,000. Now, a major assumption here, again, just for the purposes of articulating the challenge, is the assumption that, as part of our discussions with parcel 1, now I'm going to go back here, there is no ability for us to acquire the roads that we need at no cost. In other words, the owner will say, "I'm not interested in contributing that at this point," and we would then be required to acquire that, either purchasing it at fair market value, or other ways, such as appropriation. So there is a cost to the program, to the township, assumed at $1.1 million, because it is not now and it's in the future. Whereas going back to parcel 2, again, for discussion purposes, it is assumed that the owner is interested in contributing the land to the township for the purposes of completing the road, and the owner is also interested in developing, so it is provided to the township at no cost. So there is no acquisition cost for the road that is fronting parcel 2. What that means is, the road value is then calculated, the road value for parcel 1 would have been whatever we paid for it, which is $1.1 million, for parcel 2, because there was no expense for the township, but there's still a road value, that value is estimated or calculated as $400,000, which means that the developer of parcel 2 is entitled to pay pay only $100,000, not $500,000, because he would have given, or he or she, they would have given us the road, the area that's required for, dedicated the area that's required for the road at no cost. So their net contribution amount would have been $100,000. Whereas, fast forward at a future date, and we don't know when this date might be, it could be a day after the township negotiates and acquires the land, or it could be 10 years after the township acquires the land. The way that staff understands the policy provisions to be made at this point with amendments incorporated would be for us to be able to track the cost of what the value of the road fronting parcel 1 has been, and that's $1.1 million, and add that to the cost of the WARCAP at a future date, the WARCAP cost being $400,000, resulting in a net contribution amount for that parcel, parcel 1, again, not knowing when that might be, to actually $1.5 million, such that there's no overall cost or benefit, depending on how you look at it, for the benefit of waiting and not negotiating with the township on that. I hope I made that clear. I try to, I have worked with staff and tried to make sure that this is as clear as possible in terms of the administrative challenges that may come forward. With that, Your Worship, that is the end of the presentation, and if there's any questions, I'd be pleased to try and respond, and there are staff here who can assist as well.
Mr. Seffi, just to interject for a moment, then the object of WARCAP 4, after adjusting some of the roads to be completed, is to actually provide a mechanism to actually build the roads sooner by provision of having, if we could, have the properties be given to us, I guess, as part of the development process, but early, or failing that to acquire those properties, but to charge back to the acquiring, to the property we've acquired's owner or developer, the additional funds we had to pay to acquire those properties. Correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Oh, thank you very much for that presentation, very thorough. It certainly helps to clarify. I've got a couple of questions. So this WARCAP is only a mechanism to acquire the funds to complete those roads. We haven't really done a lot of detailed examination of the roads. I'm just wondering, and the congestion, so I'm just wondering if anything has been done, any studies have been done to determine the amount of congestion that we're trying to alleviate? Because it sounds to me, and maybe you can certainly clarify, is that by doing this, we're providing money upfront, taking money from, through CACs or through contributions from property owners. But is there still an increase in cost to build these roads this way, or doing the present method of waiting as development happens? It seems to me there's a lot less cost. We're not having to dig them up, put in utilities later, we're not having to purchase the land at whatever fair market value, whereas developers tend to provide it. So I'm not sure if there's enough evidence to show that there's such a congestion to warrant the expense, the additional expense it's going to cost to build these, even though if the money comes from somebody else, we may have to borrow it and pay it, pay it back, and that money may come from these CACs, but at the end of the day, it's still costing more money. And I don't have a real sense on how much more that's costing, or is it completely net? No difference whether the developer provides the roads and the utilities and all the rest of it, or we're going this way. So first of all, the science on congestion, is it there? Certainly anecdotally, people say, you know, it's slow getting through, but compared to other regions, what does it really mean? And is it that bad that it warrants extra expense? I don't know if we can comment on that.
Your Worship, I'll start, and Mr. Seffi can then chime in. I think your focus really is on status now congestion. The second question then is additional cost, and thirdly, is it going to be net ultimately? So beginning with the first question, the traffic studies that have been done and are going to need to be done in the future suggest that ultimately this must be in place. Must it be in place right now? Well, that's almost a resource question. I think the preference would be for it to be in place right now, is it have a higher level of service, but could it be left to the traditional development processes? And the answer is yes. Mr. Seffi can review, I guess, the individual status of our traffic studies, but I would just remind council that the long-term transportation plan, or the P1 map as it's been called, actually does provide for all these to be built. It's really just a matter of timing. As we go to the second question then, in terms of, okay, what is the cost of this going to be? WARCAP does, what it does is it accelerates the ability for council to build these roads, doesn't mandate it, it simply accelerates it by giving council the funds to perhaps build them sooner than if there was going to be a non-WARCAP system. So for example, people may not recall, but there are a couple of properties still left in Walnut Grove where the road kind of goes around the properties. That's your ultimate situation where a WARCAP could have taken the fund, taken the properties or gone through the process to acquire the properties, built the road, and then charged that back to the developer at a future date. So in its most basic system, WARCAP is really a time matter. The additional costs that one would incur would be incurred, I guess, or experienced if we went beyond the waiting for the WARCAP funds to, I guess, build up in a certain reserve and then go ahead and do the property or do the project. The way to advance that, which is probably the essence of your question as to the net additional cost, would be, well, if we don't want to wait but want to do it right now, how do we facilitate that? Well, the short answer is we would have to borrow then at that point and then use the WARCAP funds to repay that debt, and there would have to be some costs associated with the borrowing that Mr. Seffi can comment on as to whether or not they'd be covered by the WARCAP program, because interest as being part of CACs is a bit of a difficult topic. But fundamentally, if we can take the issue and separate it into two, one of which is policy and one of which is funding, WARCAP is a policy instrument, doesn't cost us anything further, but it gives us some flexibility to build the roads earlier, once the funds are actually there, and a mechanism to recover those costs from the developers who did not cooperate in the building of the roads earlier when we offered to build them for them on the basis of them contributing the land for free. Mr. Seffi?
Thank you. On the first question, Your Worship, in terms of, I guess, addressing congestion issues, there has not been any definitive studies done. And I guess I'll carry on and provide a bit more comments in that, you know, engineers talk about, in particular, traffic engineers, talk about, I guess, the flow, and in the same terminology as is often used for water, in that, you know, the least, the path of least resistance. So with traffic, what happens is human nature tends you to actually go to, I guess, the path of least resistance, which is the road that has the least amount of traffic on it. And what I'm trying to say by that is that talking to engineers, traffic engineers, will tell you that it likely will benefit, but it will likely benefit to the degree that it does not necessarily address all of the issues, because it needs to be part of a more comprehensive approach that provides a network that is not just limited to the arterial road network, although, you know, it helps, but to what degree, we are not certain, and we cannot be certain until, I guess, more studies are done. Typically, the congestion that is encountered by the public is at intersections, because of the turns that are required, the turning movements that are needed by the public to be made. And that is typically what happens, and to what extent completing this road network assists with addressing the public's concerns as, I guess, heard by council and members of council is yet to be determined. As far as the costs are concerned, the net costs, Mr. Becken referenced, the interest charges, they have not been accounted for or included, because as I said, this is just the actual costs, not interest costs or carrying costs. I don't think there are any restrictions, prohibitions of including such considerations as part of the analysis. And beyond that, I guess I'll go on to say that, I guess, just to reiterate, that there is added costs in constructing our community's infrastructure needs overall with something like this, if in fact it was to be constructed prior to utilities, because of the inherent costs of doing something and then having to dig it up and doing something else afterwards. Not coordinating things will cost us more overall.
Thank you. Do you have the speaker's last list, Council Arneson?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. Mr. Seffi, it's very much appreciated. I call this the recap of WARCAP, and so, you know, it is interesting to see it in a synopsis, because it helps to refresh our memories about it and to provide further detail on the analysis that has been done by staff, which is very much appreciated, and then the comments and questions. So I did have a couple myself, and I'm not sure, perhaps the chair to Mr. Seffi. We've talked, I know, a number of occasions about the infrastructure, so that the roadbed itself then would have to potentially be amended, or maybe in areas destroyed and rebuilt afterwards if the roadway was completed and then you needed servicing. Do we have any understanding at this time of what kind of funding that would take as a percentage of the overall cost? I guess it's hard to predict, because it depends on when you do it, like 10 years out or one year out, there would be cost differences, but I'm just wondering from a percentage point of view, because then I'd weigh that in terms of how much more it's going to cost to do the whole thing later on, as opposed to one component of it that really is of interest, but perhaps not that influential in the overall cost.
Your Worship, if I may?
Yes, please.
The quick answer, the short answer is no, we have not done an analysis, an analysis of calculating or estimating even the cost of providing the underground utilities at this stage. And I would suggest that is a bit more complicated and challenging than the road network, because the road network, in particular the arterial road network, is actually the standard is already provided for us in terms of our master transportation plan and enable planning work that we have done. In other words, we do know, for example, 208th Street needs to be 28 meters wide, you know, in certain sections, or all of it, unless you're at an intersection, it needs to be widened to something else at intersections. Whereas that's not the same with underground utilities, because it's a question of topography. It's a question of what area is draining into what area, and what are there going to be the ultimate uses in those areas in terms of, you know, high density, medium density, low density, before you can determine the size of pipes that go on the ground. And as such, it has to, any analysis of costs would have to follow a, not major, but at least a very preliminary analysis of sizing, of design, and then you come up with the cost. So none of that has been done.
Okay, thank you. That just brings me to a secondary question I hadn't considered until you were speaking about that one. So what I'm wondering, without being an engineer or knowing much about roadway infrastructure, could it be the case that some of the expansion of these roadways could be done on a, not to the township's full standard, but just done on a standard in order to create enhanced safety and the ease of movement of traffic, without considering its completed aspect, which then, in theory, I think, would reduce the cost if you had to go back and amend some of those areas for the infrastructure after the fact?
Your Worship, thank you again for the question. That is correct. This WARCAP does not contemplate any other interim standards, but it is possible in cases to actually review and implement a lower interim standard that may address immediate concerns in terms of traffic flows and not cost as much as doing the ultimate standard.
Okay. I have another question, thank you. So I'm just looking at WARCAP 1, 2, 3, and 4, and wondering if staff has made any assessment about a phased approach. I know that we are looking at specific folkai of where we're going to put the infrastructure, but I'm wondering whether or not if we're looking at a hybrid model of amalgamating or considering different funding sources, but to do it in a phased approach, whether or not that might be a better idea with other development coming on stream. I just wondered if that was staff consideration.
Only at a very high level, Your Worship, in terms of what was presented today, in that that is certainly one option that's available to council if they so choose to direct staff to proceed with.
Thank you, and just one final comment. It seems to me, my overall assessment of this, is irrespective of whether or not we agree with the timing or having any policy at all, this in effect creates a funding envelope that we never otherwise had. So that's kind of the bottom line.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Council Kuntz?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. So I just had a question about this, I think it was the UDI that made a couple of suggestions, and one was linking the WARCAP to the CAC lift proposal. Could you explain what that actually means?
Thank you, Your Worship. I will provide some comments, and I'll look to Mr. Chu to, I guess, add if anything needs to be added. My understanding was that typically there are many, many requirements that the development community, not just in Langley, but just anywhere, must follow and comply with and undertake to get their project off the ground and get to construction. I understand the intent of the UDI would have been to try and streamline those, such that there aren't a series of community amenity contribution policies, but rather just one, for simplicity and for understanding and for consistency, to incorporate all of them into one, such that they don't end up having to explain things to their, I guess, boards, if you will, or, you know, shareholders, or whoever they need to report to. It will be much simpler to say there is a community amenity contribution of X, as opposed to saying there's a CAC of this, and then a WARCAP of that, and Greenway amenity contribution of this, and then DCCs of that. So they are simply suggesting streamlining and putting them into one. I see Mr. Chu nodding, so I'm...
Okay, thank you.
You, Council Whitmarsh?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of questions through, Your Worship, to staff. I was wondering, on the current way that we are seeing these roads built out and developed, and I'm wondering if there's been some sort of attempt at trying to understand that how long the time would take for, for example, 208 to build out. I appreciate that we don't know all the details, because it's up to the developer to develop their land, but certainly, you know, when I drive it now, there's lots of development happening, there's lots of new large developments happening right along this section here that we're talking about needing to widen. And I'm wondering about other conversations that may have happened from people that are interested in seeing that development take place and who own land along there and are beginning to have those kind of conversations. I wonder if there's any sense of timing as to what we understand or what we think might be the case, albeit there may be a few holdouts, but generally seeing the 208 section being fully widened and using the process that we're currently following.
Your Worship, I think Council Whitmarsh answered the question himself, in that really it's a market-driven challenge and very difficult to estimate. Having said that, what we have heard in the past has been that the market is ready and willing to proceed, it's just that, for the most part, I mean, there are always some holdouts. And I hesitate to share this, because I don't want it to be used against us in terms of, if you excuse the pun, the tail wagging the dog, because there are typically some major requirements for development to proceed. So I don't want this to be an issue of, well, we must do something to fix, for example, the park issue, because providing a park is a major concern or a major requirement. Therefore, if we provide a solution to the park issue, then the road issue will be resolved. But the fact is that, you know, addressing the needs of development is not easy. So for development to proceed and complete the roads, the development or developers are required to undertake certain works that are usual and typical, but then there are other ones that require a bit more finesse, a bit more cooperation, collaboration with the municipality, with other developers in terms of addressing, and those relate to the major cost drivers such as ponds and parks and that kind of stuff. So that is a part of this... So that is a part of this challenging to estimate. If it wasn't for that, I would say in a matter of, I think, 10 years, it's a safe bet to say that the entire section of 208th Street would be completed, one way or the other, because expropriation of those holdouts, if you will, that are not willing to dedicate the land as necessary would have been fairly easy argument to make, and I think council would likely support a staff proposal to proceed with expropriation on a, I guess, strategic and ad hoc basis to deal with major corridor issues if there is some sections that are holding out. So I don't know if I answered the question adequately or not, but that's really just some thoughts.
Yeah, no, thank you. It's, I know it's a hard question to answer. So, and again, probably equally as hard or maybe more difficult is if we adopt a war cap policy, how long it would take to build up a fund that we felt could address the needs without borrowing. And again, I'm not, maybe that's just a rhetorical question because I'm not really sure there's an answer, but it does seem to be, it's going to take a significant amount of time to build up. Thank you for putting the slide up. My next question actually related to this. When I look at this war cap one and then two, three, four, we had war cap one, and then we sort of reduced the number of roads, then we went through another version of reducing the roads, and now we've increased quite dramatically, putting roads back in even more so than war cap one, and now so it's at 82,000 per acre. I'm wondering how this fits in with some of the recommendations or concerns that UDI had presented in their letter. They sort of had suggested that maybe we just target 208th Street, they had had a number of recommendations for us. This seems to, for me, based on what I've read in the UDI letter, to go the opposite of what was being recommended to UDI, I wonder if, from UDI, sorry, I wonder if we could have just maybe a comment through your worship to staff on how this fits in with the feedback we received from UDI.
Again, I'll look to Mr. Chu because he was more intimate with the input and the input sessions and the advice from UDI and otherwise from the public. So if I'm mistaken, Mr. Chu, please correct me. My understanding was that it was not necessarily the dollar amount that was of an issue for UDI, but rather the, I guess, the structure, if you will, of how it is that we arrive at a number and whether there is opportunities for recovery of those costs. In other words, try to create as fair of a policy as possible based on the fact that you have different drivers for different landowners. If somebody is holding out, they should not be rewarded, and if somebody is willing to contribute the land now, they should also equally not be rewarded. Try and structure a policy that tries as much as possible, to the extent possible, to apply the requirements equally for everybody, as well as the streamlined process that I mentioned earlier, that was the other aspect of their input, in not having layers of policies or requirements, but rather one comprehensive one that addresses all things.
And your worship, just to add two clarifications. As to the timeline, one of the challenges is the Smith neighborhood. I think 10 years is a good number Mr. Safi referred to, but that would imply that someone came forward and was able to assemble a lot of the smaller properties in a manner that was going to be cost-effective. That's been the issue to date in terms of trying to see much happening in, say, the 208th corridor from '72 to '76. The other question then was asked, well, how, what about the timing for the funds coming in? It's not an all or nothing scenario in terms of funds coming in. Council need not wait till all the funds come in to build the entire, I guess, routing. It would be possible to actually have funds come in and then apportion them to various areas, you know, as we went forward with the concept being we would do the entire plan at some point. And I reference that because the 212 connector is an example that's going to have some challenges because there's sections of that alignment that are on one side urban, on the other side rural, and so that's always going to provide us with some funding challenges as it's going to mean, I guess, appropriation of other resources in the interim that even with or without borrowing is going to be a challenge. So when one views it as simply a supplemental funding source that could be used for various segments, it does help us a bit in terms of trying to deal with some of the demands.
Okay, just to, I have two more questions here. When we consider the land that's needed for these roads and purchasing of the land to widen them or build them or whatever we need to do, are, is there, does that include in our cost estimates the consideration for pedestrian and separated cycling lanes and that sort of thing so that we can move to more green context as well as trying to reduce traffic by getting people walking and using bikes? So I'm wondering if, when we talk about road, when I look at the, for example, the La Bonte Drive extension, there is a great separated bike path, walking path that's separated, but it certainly takes up significantly more land in order to be able to do that. So is that part of the cost estimates that we would be purchasing that kind of land to developing a proper cycling network through the, which will be the most congested and busy area of Langley?
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Counselor Whitmarsh, for the question, and I have to say it depends. And I say that because we have different types of cycling facilities, as you know. If a cycling lane or a bike lane is being anticipated or designed to be within the road, then it's included. If it's a separate system, perhaps part of the greenway network, then the costs are not included for constructing it nor for the land because this is just to complete the road. So we often have the road requirements that are in addition to greenway requirements if there are greenways being proposed or contemplated or designed for as part of the enabled planning process. Those greenways are typically acquired as part of a separate process for which we have greenway amenity contribution policies existing for. And as such, this is either, I guess, independent of that process or anticipates the bike lanes within the road if in fact the bike mode is to be shared with the vehicular mode.
Right, okay, well, that's helpful information. We have currently, that La Bonte comes to 216th and is separated, the bikes will ride on a separated path, and then they'll, if we don't accommodate that, they'll end up having to then ride with traffic at that point. So I'm not sure that's necessarily going to be satisfactory to get people cycling, but anyways, I appreciate the answer. The last comment I would make is I'm just wondering about, or maybe it's a question as well, if there's been some consideration, I mean, we're going to have the same challenges of roads, certainly through the Brookswood area and the widening of roads and all that, that while this is a, an amenity policy for Willoughby area, that we might consider it actually an amenity policy for the entire township to deal with roads and roadways and widening of roads of our primary roads that we have, our arterial roads. And so I think this may have been, I don't want to speak for him, but this may have been the attempt by Counselor Ferguson four or six weeks ago when we talked about trying to have something that was township-wide, and we're going to have the same challenges there, and I'm wondering if we were to implement this across the entire township. There are other roads as well, it's not just simply these, there's certainly in Brookswood, but there'll be others in Walnut Grove, there'll be those around Alder Grove that will need to widen and expand. If we need to develop a policy that's township-wide, and maybe there's significantly more properties that would be part of this as rather than just isolating it to one area of Langley, I'm wondering if there's been any, beyond water cooler talk, if there's been any sort of analysis or discussion around what that might look like.
Your worship, there has been, I guess, more than, more than, I guess, the water cooler type discussion, but not to the extent that is absolutely necessary for something like that. And what I mean by that is the, as you know, this is not the only way that this issue, as staff understands it, could be addressed. The other way is simply directing staff to include the costs of acquiring the road that is needed for, I guess, the arterial road network in the DCC program. That is quite possible, and there aren't any legal restrictions that staff is aware of, the legislation provides for that. The last time that staff looked into it, it's almost a year ago, maybe nine months ago, that would have had a, I guess, an impact of doubling our DCC rates were we to include the land component of our roads in the DCC program. So I don't know if that helps in terms of what Counselor Whitmarsh was asking, in terms of having analyzed what a policy like this might look like or do for the entire township. It is quite possible, just like anything else, as long as, I guess, sufficient funding is available, any problem can be addressed. This would have had a very high level, the impact of doubling our DCCs, which, just as a refresher, currently, without the 2020 update, is around $20,000 for a single-family development.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ferguson.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Certainly, there's been an awful lot of discussion. I'd like to compliment staff, we've been waiting for, I guess, to actually discuss this, and we had to make a motion to do it, and I think it's important that we can sit down and go over it. It's an awful lot of information we have to kind of work ourselves through, although many of us have read the fast ones from War Cap one, War Cap one, two, three, or four, certainly comments from the open houses, comments from UDI, and also looking at our own bottom lines as to, we're a kind of a large community like the township of Langley with our hundreds of kilometers of roads and how we face the future, and not seeing this on this map right here, that the connector road really does go to a new interchange at 216th and the freeway, which is part of a very positive thing for our community, and we have been waiting and waiting for that, and it's exciting to see that be opening, and that will have an impact on our community and also a positive thing for residents. Anytime you can move traffic and move people around, people are always going somewhere. So those are all things, it's on the maps in the corner at 216th and the freeway. Certainly, the question was asked, now, I will ask a couple of really quick questions, Mr. Becken addressed it quickly anyway. We call it the connector road there that goes to 80th and La Bonte that's been mentioned. Is some of that land in the ALR, if I may, through the chair, the first one?
First question.
Yes, on the east side of 216th Street, the majority of the area is in the ALR currently.
That's what I thought, and I'm aware of that. I mean, what would be the implications of that? Would we have to get approvals from the Land Commission, or would there be other methods we could go through?
This doesn't impact the ALR lands, this policy.
Very good. And I know ownership is, we're certainly aware of that. Also, the, as had been mentioned before, some of the undeveloped areas at this point in time, and I'm talking about Smith and some of the other areas that have not been developed along the routes, is there, and it's been suggested, and maybe one, I use the word flag, but maybe we can use another term, is to have a different type of standard where knowing in the future we'll have to put our formal standards up when complete development comes into place. Now, looking at the Smith area, I have to kind of make a little map, the Smith area and some of the others that aren't developed, whether the, we call it the sidewalks to nowhere or completing where we wouldn't have to use a concrete or cement, for example, sidewalk, we could put in a temporary standard of asphalt, and also our road standards for the temporarily wouldn't have to be a higher standard but something temporary, knowing that in the future we're going to be ripping them up and putting the other, the utilities in as well. If I may, can I ask that question as well?
That is correct, your worship. I think it's, I guess, a different way of posing what was discussed earlier in terms of interim conditions that Counselor Anderson referenced. It is possible to address some of those connectivity issues, whether pedestrian or vehicular, through other means in terms of, I guess, interim measures. That is not the focus of this.
Yeah, and those are things we can, I mean, it all comes down to, you know, we're talking about money, I mean, things like other things, larger things in the future like cycling, which is important, but it's important when we put in our full standards. Walk abilities are great if you've got sidewalks and the people don't, sometimes don't care if they have, I'm sure they care to a degree, but a asphalt temporary, knowing there'll be a, something concrete in the future. I know where I live, I'm fortunate enough to have asphalt sidewalks, which I don't think will replace for in my lifetime, but they're certainly valuable right now. I did also want to talk about, you've mentioned war cap one, two, three, and four. Today, we're looking at war cap four, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and so that will mean we, as a council, will have to look at some ways of finding the funding. I know it's put in here, but also looking at how township will either borrow or have a kind of a temporary means or either preferred or bonus and looking at the other ones. So I know there's an awful lot of questions that still have to come, but I certainly appreciate the level of debate today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Long.
There she blows, okay. Yeah, many different facets here. I guess what I'm hearing, I've heard quite clearly is, okay, war cap is a method to collect the funds, but it's not really a way to get the roads built right away, it's a matter of putting money aside. So to me, that increases the cost of housing immediately because now you've got more costs involved, and then if construction's going to take a little longer, wow, you've got, you know, you're going to have that period of time in between with expectations that may not be fulfilled. I think we all know about how long it takes to, for projects to be done, so there's going to be delays regardless. Before, we might have someone to blame it on, now we'll have to blame it on ourselves because if we're in charge of the projects, right? And then this whole idea of digging it up again is, of course, a concern. So I'm just going to make a few more comments, but I wonder if staff can then afterwards tell me where I'm wrong so that I can try and adjust my thinking if need be. Because we talked about traffic congestion, and I did, when I saw that on the slide, I thought, ah, yeah, we're talking about increased traffic congestion because as you build more roads, more cars come. But of course, that's not really what the intent was, the intent was to relieve it. But in my mind, I think that exactly what happens in my experience, and I think everybody will know that, when you build more roads, more people will use it, more people will come, and to me, they're going to be the commuters, people that are going to use these roads to connect back and forth. So that's my one thought there. It's going to confuse the development community immediately because now you're talking about different dollars. And then, of course, there was the issue of fairness because those that want to put land now, how do you treat them versus later? So I guess these are just a few things that pop to mind that make it very difficult for me, and I'm going to use the pun, of course, I don't know, we should be going down this road, ha, ha. But most definitely, there was also talk about applying this elsewhere, and staff have mentioned, Mr. Safi, about the DCCs. Well, let's remind each other that we've doubled the DCCs just this year, right? They've gone up 200%, I think, or close to. And then there's all the other costs that have been added to development. I'm not trying to be an apologist for development, but there are some very, you know, Metro Vancouver water DCCs have come up, there's our DCC rates, the sewage, maybe it's the sewage and drainage that's doubled, I guess, that's the one that's doubled. And TransLink, I guess, they're going to lump some on as well, right, some DCCs increases there. And then the province have layered it on as well with their provincial taxes. Now, I don't know if that status has been removed, but that was mentioned in the UDI letter, that there's this additional school taxes and the luxury property transfer taxes, so I don't know if those factor in or not, so this is why I'm asking for a little bit of clarification. But bottom line is, the costs have gone through the roof or going up considerably, and now we're adding potentially more costs. So anyway, that's my concerns, but I think I really do have a firm belief that, I'm not trying to penalize folks and their cars, but the more roads you build, the more cars will use them. So I don't know if that's going to solve the problem or create a new one.
Thank you. Did you have any comments, Mr. Safi? Okay, thank you. Counselor Woodward.
Yeah, Mr., I saw a couple of questions, and then I'll spread out some comments. I appreciate the presentation is finally to council. I'm going to remind... I'm going to remind everybody, the first memo was actually dated almost a year ago now, and I feel like I'm going to qualify for super senior at our aquatic facilities before this problem's addressed. Mr. Seifi, if you could go back to the slide which showed the per-acre amenity fee examples? Yeah, so the problem here that I see is that this, unless I missed it, Mr. Seifi, you can show it to me. This didn't explain to council that this is, the reform that was proposed on December 2nd was intended to function similar to our existing Greenway amenity program and a latecomer that doesn't expire. Perhaps you could explain that?
Thank you, your worship, through you to councillor Woodward. I think that was the intent of this slide, to demonstrate the fact that in the cases where we are unable to negotiate the acquisition of a certain section of the road that's in the Work Cap policy, the cost of it will have to be tracked, in that we don't want the owner to benefit from the, I guess, the lack of cooperation and collaboration with the township, and waiting for, I guess, $1.1 million reward. And what this means is that there is a flow-through of the costs that the program as a whole has had to bear, so that cost of $1.1 million at today's values will have to be tracked and carried forward until such time as the developer of parcel one is ready to develop, at which time that could be added to their contribution amount.
Yeah, so that would essentially mean that lot number three, who develops today and contributes $200,000 under this example, would have, under these reforms that were processed on the 2nd or submitted on the 2nd, that 200K would flow back to that person at some point in the future?
That's correct, yes.
So that would function very differently than a tax on development, which is what a version of War Cap evolved into. It evolved into buying land for a very small set of roadways, and building those roads as essentially a tax on development, versus these attempts in the original proposal, which is try to diversify that burden and spread it out, similar to how the Greenway amenity program operates. So I don't really know if that fully came through within the presentation, such that as in the original notice of motion, reimburse all development proponents as the program allows, meaning timing, so that it doesn't constitute a tax on development to the benefit of a small number of property owners, which was what I read in the UDI letter that councillor Whitmarsh referenced, and we're attempting to address those concerns, which I termed as maintaining the existing economics of development. Now, Mr. Backen, would that be something that you were trying to get to in some of your comments?
I think that's effectively correct. This is a bit of a policy approach to collecting additional funds that give us some opportunity, that are then going to allow us to recapture any costs we incur from the developers themselves.
And just another question, if I may, Mr. Mayor. When do you think the road network in Willoughby will be completed under the current process?
That was a question for Mr. Backen. It's hard to estimate. As I said earlier, your worship, it is really just trying to grab a reasonable number out of the air. The entire network of Artier Roads in Willoughby could take as long as 10, 15, 20 years, between 10 to 20?
I mean, are we even projecting the completion of the road network within the Smith neighborhood plan within five to 10 years currently, based on some of the issues with that neighborhood plan? I had another question based upon Mr. Mayor Jack Froze's questions. When we currently build a road in front of a development, and we get that widening as part of the development, are we required to prove congestion before we widen that road, or do we just widen it anyway?
The requirement for widening are based on our standards, so there is no requirement for them to prove the need for the widening.
Yeah, thank you very much. So the next one. Right now, the way that situation that Mr. Backen mentioned, that we currently still have in Walnut Grove, where we have, you know, someone that hasn't developed their property, and we have a gap in a sidewalk, you know, across the street from a school, and it's still there 30 years later, the only way, I think you mentioned that as a direction of council for, did you call it ad hoc expropriation? So we would have to come back, pay for that land, and then build the road, and then use the construction within the DCC program, but essentially, we would have to buy that land in order to solve that particular gap. Is that correct?
That's correct. In that situation, it's an example of where the plans were completed and filled out, but because of the residual property values or a creek, that property value wasn't sufficient to warrant it, so it remains as a bit of a missing tooth. And that problem is what we could experience in some areas of Willoughby, where we have the Smith neighborhood plan that has no timeline, as it's had some challenges. And as was referenced before, the 212 Connector, in terms of just the, where it transcends the boundaries, as was referenced by councillor Ferguson, is it adjacent to the ALR? It is, but the road alignment itself can fit within the non-ALR lands, given the various approvals we've obtained.
Yeah, so if we end up with, you know, five, six, or seven of those in Willoughby, that, you know, 20 years from now, that could end up being a very costly problem to solve. And Mr. Backen, do we not, in a way, motivate someone to simply not develop their land, forcing us to buy it, when we have 80,000 residents living there 20 years from now?
Possible. I think the best motivator is actually financial returns, and that's where we're seeing where there's some impediments, is when they simply can't get the financial returns required to develop any properties, such as the case when, say, a one-acre parcel with a 15 or 20 units per acre designation is worth more as a one-acre parcel than it is as a property that's developed ultimately because of all the costs and charges.
Yeah, I can't even imagine what the costs and charges are going to be 20 years from now. So I think, you know, I had one more question, Mr. Seifi, if you could go back to the, without the one, two, three, show us War Cap four as a road network. Yeah, that there. So how much of that green, do you think, just a rough estimate, has been constructed already? Because certainly some of it, between 204th and 208th on 80th, that portion of 200th that's green there, other than down by Home Depot, you know, some portions of 72nd, those, you know, we're putting it in here for simplicity to show the end goal of what the sections are the most important, but some portion of that has been constructed already, maybe even half? Would that be accurate, or 40%?
I would have guessed lower, your worship, to councillor Woodward. I would have guessed maybe a quarter, 20%, 25%, but you could be correct. I haven't really put my mind to it.
Would that decrease the amenity amounts per acre that you've shown to council by 25%?
Potentially, but then, as I said, also, we need to take a more close and accurate look at the 900 acres of land. So if it's been developed and the road is no longer needed to be part of the part A, if you will, of the calculations, then similarly, the land will have to be removed, because they will no longer be needed to be part of the denominator, the B part of the formula.
Oh, great. So the amenity fee would be lower than what we were shown. Okay. So the next question, in regards to the DCC program example. Of course, that is an option to simply add the land that we require to complete these green sections to the DCC program?
That's correct.
That's correct. So then, that would mean essentially that developers in Murrayville and in Aldergrove would then be contributing towards this road network within Willoughby that benefits maybe Willoughby development disproportionate to those other areas? Would that be fair?
Well, it depends on how council wishes to proceed. It could be divided, if you will. The DCC does not need to be township-wide. It could be neighborhood or area basis. So it does not need to, but if it was imposed and did not have, I guess, a similar level of requirements in Murrayville, it is possible that one area would be paying more than another area.
Okay, so I think that that's probably, you know, the, I don't really want to get into increasing the complexity of the DCC program, and I certainly don't want development in Fraser Highway, or Murrayville, or Aldergrove contributing to what is a Willoughby development issue that I philosophically started with the approach that Willoughby development should pay to solve it. I had a couple more questions here. The way the Greenway amenity program operates, is that a large amount of energy to track how much is required to flow back to future development proponents?
Mr. Chu, can you respond to that?
So would it be fair, Mr. Chu, that this is something we're already doing?
It's a similar program.
Similar, so that would be a yes?
But the difference is, there isn't a tracking or flow-through, so it's a downward later difference.
Okay, that's good. I appreciate that clarification. Can I, Mr. Seifi, can you go back to the map that showed all of the acres that would be included within the program and subject to the amenity fee? That map there. So would it be fair to say that if there's concern from council, I think it was referenced about rising home prices, which I left to the end, that if this is delayed further, and delayed again, and delayed again, that the quantity of acres that would be available to contribute to finishing some of these gaps and accumulating these funds would decrease, either meaning that we could solve the problem to a lesser extent, or we would simply have a shrinking number of acres, which would rise the per-acre fee disproportionately? So the longer we wait, the more expensive the program becomes for development? Would that be fair?
Yes.
Excellent. I like yes and no answers. That's great. So the other thing I wanted to address is the tax on development. So War Cap three was evolved into a tax on development, and these, I don't think it came out fully, because it is a complex issue to solve, and there are some different ways to go about it. But it is designed very similar to the Greenway amenity program, such that it is fair for all development, moving back from the version that evolved into a tax on development to solve one portion to the benefit of a small number of property owners, as opposed to solving the problem structurally while maintaining the economics of development. And I'll just repeat it again, I just have to keep trying to address this issue. Amenity fees do not increase the cost of housing. They reduce the profit for the land speculator. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kunst?
Through your worship to Mr. Backen, or to Mr. Seifi. If we adopted War Cap and we took in, maybe we did one, two, or three or four, how many years would it be before, you know, all those roads would be completed? What would be the timeframe, considering, I mean, there's just so many things to consider? We would, you know, do temporary borrowing, or, you know, all of those things. I just was wondering about that.
It depends really on the scope and scale of the improvements we decide to proceed with. So under each of the scenarios, there's different funding opportunities and different responsibilities. But if we take four as the example, it would likely take a couple of years, a few years, I'll say anyways, to actually get enough funds to tackle a single project or a single area. That's without borrowing. So there could be some immediate, I guess, potential benefits in the terms of a short term, whereas if we were waiting for development to occur itself, again, it could occur incrementally as well. It'll depend upon the developments, but it would depend upon which priorities we had. And I go back to the 212 Connector corridor, for example. That's something where the additional funding could be useful to us to facilitate the entire corridor without having to bear the full responsibility from the general funds or the other funds we have available.
So is it possible to find a way to target some roads that are not going to be like what you just suggested? I guess, like, weaved through all of this, is, you know, if we do A or B, is the taxpayer, and, you know, if we are going to buy roads and borrow money, you know, how does that impact the budget? And I know I've heard, you know, different things, you know, if we do A or B, then, you know, the amenity will pay for it, but it's going to take longer to, you know, get that money in the amenity. And if we really want development to pay for development, then will it truly pay for development if it takes, you know, 10 years? And if we're paying for it first, like, I guess those are just some of the things that keep, you know, popping back into my head with this War Cap. And I do really, you know, I appreciate all the work that's been done in this. And councillor Woodward, I know that you've, you know, spent so much time, so it's just, it seems like it's complicated, but I feel like we can get there at some point if we just can agree on maybe which roads and, you know, which way we want to go and how this will impact taxpayers.
Thank you. Councillor Long?
Yeah, thanks. Just about the DCCs again, I think that's always been a shared, when we collect DCCs, it's a shared thing throughout the township, because you use DCCs for sewer projects and so forth that benefit all parts of the township. So I don't have an issue with that, not that I'm suggesting we do that, but I was just going to, I made that comment. But it's unlike, because we're mentioning CACs a lot in this conversation, and that one, I thought, was more to be a neighborhood, neighborhood-only kind of an amenity fund, because each neighborhood has its own needs. So anyway, I didn't want to be snipey, but I mean, that's something that's all been changed now anyway, because you've got the special Aldergrove fund, right? But I was very, very, very concerned about sidewalks. So why couldn't we, Mr. Backen, you said through you, your worship, something about the missing teeth in development? Can we not somehow task the development on each side to provide a right-of-way for sidewalk? As councillor Ferguson has said, you know, these interim properties that are now disconnected, disjointed, which is a real concern for everybody. It's come up many, many a time. We could put an asphalt pathway through there for interim while these folks hold out. Is there not a mechanism by which that could be done, sort of aside from this? Maybe it's a War Cap five, I don't know. But anyway, could it be something separate? Or could it be that we expropriate the right-of-way without having to buy the land? Because I know it's been mentioned, boy, it'd be a shame if we had to buy it. Well, that's maybe why we need War Cap. But there must be some other way that we can bridge those gaps, for safety reasons, development on each side, other resources that can be used to do that, to join them up with asphalt sidewalks.
So the situation of sidewalks is something that, I guess, can be addressed inside or outside a community amenity contribution such as War Cap. So War Cap, I guess, could be altered, tinkered with, to include sidewalks, bike lanes. Those things could be done, because those are all amenities that, provided they're not funded somewhere else, could be included. So that's the first part. The second part, then, is under what legal authority could we then require non-developing properties to participate in providing sidewalks or something of a lesser nature than the roads? And the short answer is, without their consent, it would require the expropriation you referenced, whether it be of the right-of-way or whatnot. That would be of the lands. In theory, it would be possible to, I guess, expropriate a right-of-way or an easement, but because of the long-term implications, I think it's going to have the same costs associated with it as taking the portion of land outright. And the challenge, of course, with the expropriation is the process in terms of we'd have to do it parcel by parcel by parcel. So having a comprehensive position such as a CAC or even a DCC program helps in doing so. Again, the trigger being when someone comes forth to develop, or if they don't want to develop at that time, then to create the legal obligation for them to provide the property through something such as an expropriation.
Well, thanks. And just to sum up, no matter where we go with this War Cap, that is an issue that we have to address at some point or other, because that's going to come up more and more, and it has already over the years, and it will continue to come up, where you'll have these gaps, and here you want kids to get to school, and all of these other things that we talk about, and pedestrian-friendly, et cetera, et cetera. We have to find a way to bridge those gaps, and development will or will not come whenever it's ready. So in the interim, we have to have a plan.
Thank you. Councillor Woodward?
Yeah, I just wanted to just address that, and then I think we do need to get onto the budget. I do appreciate getting this presentation behind us, people can absorb it, and hopefully spend the time to talk to staff a bit more about it, for those that have questions. The debt issue, I think we, you know, we've heard about this multiple times. The debt issue is not related to the implementation of this program. There's going to be no development-based funding source to solve these gaps in the road network, should they evolve down the road, without looking at a policy like this, and with a shrinking number of acres. There's not, there's no requirement to borrow the money to fill the gaps, especially when you have more expensive ones. But if you end up with one that's an avenue, we're going to be looking to the taxpayer to come up with that amount of money to expropriate that land value to fill the gap, and that, to me, is just not an acceptable outcome down the road, whether that's 10 or 20 years from now, and we can plan for that and solve it now. The other thing is just more philosophical, and then I'll just leave it there, is that, you know, congestion and so on, and, you know, people move into a construction site and then complain, and all these other comments we've heard over the years. It's just not acceptable to me that we have 30,000, 35,000 residents and adding...
acceptable to me that we have 30,000, 35,000 residents and adding two to three more per year without a functioning, basic road network and sidewalks. And just don't consider it, consider it a basic necessity of a functioning, livable neighborhood. And we can solve it. It's been presented, and we still believe we have a responsibility to do so. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, just a question through your worship to Mr. Sevji. I want to just clarify what I thought I heard you say and make sure I heard it right. I thought I heard you suggest that we could consider as another option to this that we could double the DCCs across the township to use that money for purchasing road to widen and arterial expansion and so on. And that would work out to about 20,000 an acre. That's what I thought I heard you say, but I wanted to get clarification.
Thank you for the clarification, and I apologize. Some of the time, the answers can't be straightforward, yes and no, because of the fact that these are very challenging and complex themes, and they need to be explained. So my response was to a question, I believe, raised by Counselor Arneson, as to whether other, I guess, approaches have been considered and whether costs could be reduced if we were to go to an interim measure, I believe. What I said was, this is not something that staff is recommending by any means, but what I said was that it is possible, in theory, to include the cost of the land as part of the DCC program. Nobody does that, that we're aware of, in the lower mainland at least, maybe in the entire province. But it is possible because of the fact that there are no restrictions in the legislation, and we ourselves have done it in the non-developing areas. So for example, some portions of Fraser Highway, 16th Avenue, those are sections of road that we do know that are not going to be acquirable as part of the development process. Therefore, the land component has gone into the DCC program. So with that as background, if council wanted to pursue another approach, it could be possible, it would be possible, to include the land component in a DCC program. And I went further to say that we have analyzed the costs at a very high level a year ago, and to do that would be essentially doubling our DCC rates, not per acre, but per single-family development. So if you had a four-lot subdivision, your current DCC rate would be $80,000, because you have four times 20,000, 80,000. And the estimate that we did about a year ago was to double that charge to be $160,000.
For a four-lot subdivision?
For a four-lot subdivision, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That clarifies. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we've exhausted the speaker's list, and it's a great presentation and good discussion. So this is just for receipt. So we're going to move on to the continuation of the 2020 draft capital budget presentation. And I believe Ms. Sinclair will be presenting that. Thank you. Good afternoon. Before you begin, just to get a sense of where we're going to be in our time, because I was thinking after two hours, we'd take a little bit of a break. So if you wish, we could take a little bit of a break now for five minutes, just to stretch, and then continue the presentation. And then, you know, or, I don't know how much time you'll need for this. It all depends on questions, I guess, but.
No, it's fine.
Okay. Okay, so take a little bit of a break?
Sure.
So it'll take about five minutes just to stretch our legs.
Hi, how are you doing?
Good. How are you doing? With the budget and capital budget. So Ms. Sinclair, take it away. I'll get your mic on. There you go.
Thank you, worship and members of council. This is where we left off. The last time we got together, we were on the Stormwater slide. And so I'll just start right there and dive right in. So as per normal, this is-
I just might say one thing. So as far as questions from council, do you want to go through this, and then we'll stop at Stormwater, and then go through questions?
Sure.
Okay, so.
Forty-two.
Yeah, we're the tab, Stormwater. Yeah. And then, yeah, 189 on our agenda, I believe. So go through your presentation, and then I'll take questions if there are any from council. Counsel, thank you.
So I'll leave this slide up just for a minute or so for everyone to take a look at. And if you have any questions about projects that are showing us inside the funding envelope or ones that have fallen outside or below, this is the time to ask those questions. And we have staff and abundance of staff here to hopefully answer them if you have any questions. This is basically how far the funding envelope for Stormwater took us. So their funding envelope annually is $1,878,121. That's that middle column called operating revenue. That's Stormwater's slice of the operating contribution to capital. And it's in the base budget. So I'm just going to let's, yeah.
Okay, so I'll take questions. Yeah, so a couple of quick questions. Just the diking. I know we always seem to push that off, and with climate change and rising rivers and that sort of thing, I suppose we're waiting for some magical provincial funding to come down and help us with that. But any comments on the diking? It's, we just not, not seem to be ever going forward on that.
Yeah, we do have some carryforward, I believe. I don't have it at the tip of my tongue how much, but we, yes, it is one that we do find difficult to get into the funding envelope, mostly because of its size. It would take more than half of the annual allocation. So it is, it is one that is a constant struggle, for sure.
Thank you. Counselor Arneson.
Yes, thank you, worship. I'm wondering, actually, when we look at the unfunded item of, the mayor referenced it, the Stormwater Climate Change Adaptation Study. And it doesn't, I mean, there are details provided here in the book, but it doesn't really explain some things. And what I put in my own notes is, why couldn't that be considered in conjunction with some of the other activities that we currently likely have funding for? For example, integrated stormwater management plans maybe could subsume some of that, because there may or may not be funding there. Last year, there was funding, and I know there is another one that was indicated we were going to undertake this year. But I'm trying to find some way to consider alternative funding envelopes that would allow these things to happen, because short of these studies being done and what that would reveal to us, I'm concerned it's going to end up in the same category as diking, where it's kind of the never-never land of things that we know that we need to be doing.
Right.
And they're all critical, actually, to climate change and adaptation. And I think if the last weekend taught us anything, it's that flooding is a big problem, and it's not going to get any better on its own. And so I think we need to have a more concrete and detailed understanding of what that could look like in terms of our land use management.
Thank you for that question, Counselor Arneson. Just hearing you say it back to me, Stormwater Climate Change Adaptation Study. I'm asking myself, is that attached to a capital project, or would that be better reflected in the one-times? Mr. Sevji, do you know, is that a study in and of itself, or would it be attached to a capital project upon completion?
Mrs. Johann.
I believe it's just a study at this point.
A study. Okay, so in terms of looking for another funding source, we could consider prior year surplus for that one. As I say, as I'm hearing you read it back to me, I'm thinking that would probably be more appropriately be in the prior year surplus, where you have one-times and studies and reviews in that category. So we can take a look at that for potential for funding over there.
Yeah, because then the classic comment would, could we flag that one to make sure that we're considering it in the funded category, to see if there's existing funds that would address that cost. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of council? Okay, Ms. Sinclair, can you move on?
And the next category is fire, and it has a couple of line items that look a lot like repetitive line items from year to year, the firefighting equipment that they're continuously replacing, training equipment capital, and then the fire fleet capital, fire engine, Quinton tanker, which was pre-approved in 2019. So that one should be arriving in 2020. It was pre-approved for the purposes of the order being placed, as there's quite a long lead time for those projects. And then in the, below the line, we have the storage facilities, preparedness equipment, and the fire halls, space planning.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? If we see any, we can move on.
Police services, similar to fire. It's got some repetitive categories, non-shared furniture and equipment, which we do not share with the city, and then the, which is predominantly in the CPOs, and then shared furniture and equipment, which we do share with the city. And you can see a part of the shared furniture and equipment is above the line, and a part of it is below the line.
Thank you. Counselor Woodward.
If we have an agreement with the city to share in the costs of the improvement and capital replacement and improvement of that facility, why wouldn't they be paying for everything that we're paying for?
The CPOs, we tend to, they're identified as being either in the township, in which they're directly paid for by the township. So there's four in the township, four CPOs, and this is furniture related to the CPOs. And then there's one CPO that's in the city. So if this was the city one, it would be purely theirs. But because it's a township CPO, it's one that we pay for entirely.
Okay, so, you know, okay, I think that clarifies it. And then, so whenever we see an other, we can assume that it's at the main detachment building. Does that be fair?
If you see an other?
An other, that's, because that's the city there, is it not? Under other?
Other.
Other, $28,000, other.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, sorry, sorry. I was looking at the, I was looking at the description. I'm thinking, I don't know.
So whenever we see other, we can, okay, thank you.
No question. No further questions. Thank you.
And Recreation and Culture. This is the list of Recreation and Culture. Their list used to be a lot longer, but Facilities has taken over a lot of what would normally have shown up in past years in the Recreation budget. So this is really purely Recreation and Culture type items on this list. I'll just let it sit for a second. We do have one split above and below the line as well here.
Okay, thank you.
Facility Management, this is-
Let me go back one step. AC, UCC, Water Park, Amenities Equipment Replacement. So it's only, what, a year old? Two years old? It's not a big amount, so I'm just running with that. I guess it's in the details. I haven't had a chance to.
Yeah, I can find that.
Something, I mean, it looks like a smaller amount, but something that can wait.
Amount. And so we've drawn a hard line at the end of their funding, but if we had to find that $10,000, I'm sure we probably could.
Not emergent or anything? Okay. Yeah.
Inner tubes, umbrellas, so outdoor furniture.
Okay, thanks. Fair enough. Thank you. Counselor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, worship. I'd like to refer to on page 124, the multiple-location recreation equipment replacement. I just had a clarification in terms of that money's currently unfunded at $50,000. I'm just wondering whether or not there is some safety criteria that the township needs to meet in terms of aging equipment that may have a higher standard of regulation that is not necessarily being addressed by existing equipment. And I'm not, because I know, for example, that schools have recently had a higher standard of safety for their equipment that's been implemented. So I'm wondering if that's the same, and if that's something that we're required to adhere to.
I will defer to Ms. Claire.
No.
It's not. So it's just replacement at the end of its useful life.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's all the questions. Thank you.
And then the facility story that this is hard to see, you might be better served by turning to your section. Page 27. And their operating contribution is $1,493,375, about four from the right.
Thank you.
And the airport. All of the critical items have been funded for the airport. They don't have a lot of funding for capital, so they tend to draw upon the prior year surplus for their capital, as you can see in that third column from the right. And the last item was pre-approved in a report to council just before Christmas.
And that was from a grant, other?
Yes, that's correct, yeah. Information Technology. Again, they have some sunlight, whoops, sorry. Facilities?
Counselor Arneson had a question.
Thank you, worship. Thank you. I have to go through the paper now, because that's where I made my notes.
Right.
Yeah, I have a question regarding, on page 14, for the airport. For the demolition is currently unfunded of the building itself. And so for $100,000, I'm wondering what our Plan B is in terms of having a new building on the site. And it says that currently the demolition cost is, it gives a rationale of how this was organized, but it seems, you know, that the funding isn't there for. And can't we find somewhere else to derive those funds from? Because it seems it's rather necessary in order just to get on with finishing off the site, to have that undertaken.
Right, I will flag that one for that.
We can actually proceed with that. The proviso, I think, would be to have the developer of the property assume those costs and try to charge them back to us, perhaps as another charge, so we could actually take those and amortize those over a longer period. It's not preferred, but it's something that we could look at if this wasn't to be accepted, which that's why it's falling outside the line.
Okay, Counselor Long.
Thanks, your worship. And there was thought of moving, wasn't the tower going to be possibly moved down the road, being cheaper and more sustainable?
The thought was to remove the cab or remove the cab further down the road. The challenge is the structural integrity of the cab itself for the first level of it is not what we'd hoped. So it may be, while it's cheaper to move, that the cost to, I guess, refurbish might well exceed the cost of simply building a new structure that mimic the cab.
Okay, but we don't have some other funds that were dedicated to things that we could maybe use? You know, there was some money gifted.
There are other funds. However, the challenge with those funds is, right now, in an economical perspective, it looks like they'd only cover about 50% of the entire facility that would be needed. That would be saving it. So as part of that discussion, it led to the conclusion that we're better off to actually simply replace it than we are to try to relocate it because of the structural integrity and what it's composed of. Some of the materials there would now be considered hazardous.
Thanks. Too bad.
Okay, thank you. So we're off to information IT.
So this first item is the completion of the Perfect Mine Recreation System Implementation, which is a replacement of the class system. So that's actually a really large project that's undergoing right now. And I believe we're scheduled for go-live in February? February 25th? February 25th, along with most other municipalities in the lower mainland. You'll be hearing that term probably a little bit. The Tempest receipt printers, they are just absolutely on their last legs, which is why they're marked critical. And so they're being replaced. And the balance of the items, the next two or three items are regular end-of-life replacement in the IT department, and then there's the e-government framework and electronic document management. And that 693 is the annual allocation, $693,000 to information technology. Corporate administration, this is where we have some kind of odd items, unique items. We have just a small amount for administration items, projects that come up during the year. The capital contingency, $150,000 for the whole township, is included in this category, the 150. We have some property rehabilitation on the Blair Farm. And then here's where you see the strategic land acquisition project that in 2020 will be funded from debt. The unidentified externally funded is the same as for roads and parks and storm and water and sewer. It is for the occasion that we may have outside money coming in, like grant funding, that we can establish a budget using a reallocation from this envelope. And then the general land capital provision, which for years was accessing the land capital reserve, is now showing a split of $15 million for debt, if it's required, for property acquisitions, and $5 million for other, which might be other funds coming in as well.
Thank you. Counselor Davis?
Just a quick question through the staff. $270,000 for the property rehabilitation for the Blair Farm. What's- What's that?
What is that?
Primarily, it's dealing with the cement removal. Two things were discovered, or three things were discovered, the cement foundations for the old barns, but also there's a cement manure bunker, pit, that is somewhat dangerous because, as you're well aware, the cement itself can, um, that's right, the, the manure itself can be in a partial liquid form, especially liquefied underneath. So as a consequence, unless one wants to have a new Millner, Mariville Swimming Pool, uh, we'll have to deal with it.
Okay, so that's not of what, we didn't spend that tearing down, this is a future.
This is really digging the cement out and restoring the front area, subject to heritage trees or plaques, to a kind of a, what we'll say, a passive park, uh, level, which is a bit less than a farm level.
Thank you.
Councilor Woodard?
Yeah, Mr. Backen, would it be appropriate to, to that, use some of that from the landfill reserve, which I don't really, in having toured them, it's sort of like a land restoration reserve? Would it be potentially possible to fund some of this out of that for other projects? Or is that landfill reserve looking for its own funding over the next couple of years?
That's a good question in terms of the landfill reserve. I'm not sure what its limitations were under the policy under which it was created. Uh, I suspect it was specific locations, but I'm not at all positive. Karen, are you aware?
I'd have to-
We'll have to check that, then.
Check that, but do you know what its health is in terms of demands coming up over the next two or three budgets?
Two issues with it, um, the expected demands over the longer term, and it may be not two or three budgets, but twenty or thirty years, will likely exceed the revenue that's there. And secondly, we have some internal borrowing that were offset against that because the longer-term, uh, restoration needs for some of the landfills, uh, or their, uh, impact on joining properties, has been put in a longer timeline because we, uh, fairly recently acquired a right-of-way for one concern, but there's other properties we'd probably like to acquire over the medium term. So the short answer is, it's probably insufficient, but it's probably a number of years down the road.
Okay, thank you, it's, questions?
Community Development, this is really, um, these are all funding envelopes. The thirty-five million is representing a, a guesstimate or an estimate of, of, uh, properties that will come to us from the development community. Um, it was extra-large in two thousand and eighteen, so we have yet to see what it will be for two thousand and nineteen, and Development Coordinated Works is, um, a funding envelope to use some of the non-refundable deposits that we have on hand should projects be determined during the year. And this is just an update of the last time we met, um, so that's the end of the project slides. The last time we got together, the, the, the base budget was a four point one-two percent. Uh, we've found just a few small items, uh, that we've been able to exclude from it, it's now at three point eight-six. The, um, by including the programs, the large category that we included for programs for roads, facilities, um, transportation, or sorry, storm, and one more, parks. We were able, Engineering took a long look at those projects, and while there, there's, there was not many, uh, if any, that were reduced, they were able to get to their goal, goal baseline budget that is required in one to two years more time. So what they did is Engineering took, took a look, took a look at all of those areas, where, this is the area that was two point seven-two in the first presentation of programs, it was three point six million, and they took a look at it, um, the team, at, over a couple of days, and figured out, they all had targets for each of the individual items, and some of them are getting there in year three, some are getting there in year four of this five-year plan, and they would push it out for, by one or two years. So they're just going to get to the same target, but it's just going to take a little bit longer. Um, so that one is, has been, for two thousand and twenty, that one is now at five point two-nine. It, it's including the three point eight-six, so three point eight-six plus what is one point two-seven is the five point two-nine. And then finally, the nine point six-nine that was in the, uh, if you added them all up before, is now at eight point one-five, but that's totally not a total, that's just recognizing the value of everything. So the range, instead of being four point, four percent to nine percent, is now three percent to eight, three point-
Just to add to that, Your Worship, to emphasize, that's really what we'll call cost drivers or revenue inadequacies. These aren't recommendations, these are just factual statements in terms of where we're at. This is not a proposal, um, we'll be talking about that later in terms of not so much proposal, but a timeframe to have a proposal or to actually envelop some of the concerns and, and options and opportunities that we actually have. So just emphasize that these really are the net numbers showing the deficiencies, and this is our goal to overcome these in some way, shape, or form. Karen's about to embark upon one way of addressing them, not the only way, but one way, and that is to look at the impact of a decrease in contributions to capital as we go forward, and she's come up with some options. Again, this may, by some, be perceived as saying, well, these are the only options, these are not, are the, are not the only options, these are the options we began with in terms of our process to see what the impact would be on contributions to capital. In subsequent presentation or discussion, we'll look at some other options that we have as well.
So this slide is meant to show that in two thousand and nineteen, what, what is typically considered to be our, our major funding sources for capital, is the operating contribution to capital at eight point nine million, the operating transfer to the Capital Infrastructure Renewal and Replacement Reserve, which is two point four million, and the prior year's operating surplus, which last year was four point four million. So that was fifteen point eight million dollars from these three sources to fund capital in two thousand and nineteen. So in two thousand and twenty, where we're at right now, is we've maintained the base at eight point nine, the operating contribution to capital. Uh, we have redirected two point two million of the Capital Infrastructure Replacement Renewal Reserve, uh, we've reduced it and replaced it with the debt payment for the Smithland Assembly. And then we have, um, and that, that two hundred thousand remaining will, the same thing will happen in next year. And we have two point three million dollars in, um, prior year surplus funding capital. So it's significantly less than, than last year, which, if you remember my comments about our operating surplus, I'm happy about that it is less. Um, we need to start building up our operating surplus, which is the prior year surplus, um, back up to a level where it needs to be. So instead of fifteen point eight million for two thousand and twenty, at this stage of the game, we have eleven point five million, just considering what we've looked at so far. Um, so it is, it is three point seven million less than last year to start with, and, um, we will, the options that I'm going to talk about, they're on some slides that look quite cluttered, and I'm going to kind of stand back from those slides and just narratively tell you what, what they're doing, and then you have the slides for detail if you want to take a look at some of the, some of the details. So this is where we're at now with the revised property tax increase, um, of just the base items.
Counselor Ferguson?
Do we have that in our notes somewhere?
It's in the, in the presentation, the, for the PowerPoint that was handed out last week.
Okay, it's in the PowerPoint that I've got here, okay, very good, then.
So that's just where we're at. We have one point, so, in addition to the three point eight-six, which is just core base increase, increase, we have, um, a restrained capital program in that we have three point seven less this year than we did last year. Uh, and we still have one point two-seven percent in programs, uh, that are unfunded, and we have discretionary items of two point eight-five percent that are unfunded. So as far as options go, this is where I'm going to stand back a little bit, as this slide looks quite busy. So one thing we could consider, and again, as, as Mr. Backen has said, these aren't, these aren't recommendations, these are just to expand the thinking as to what are some of the things that we can do, and I'm sure there's probably a dozen varieties of, of options that could come off of this. We could decrease the eight point nine million contribution to capital by another million, and I apologize for the not even number, but we, we started out by, um, quantifying that with some projects, and we've just had to stick to it, it was just easier than, than trying to smooth it out. So if we decrease the eight point nine million by one million, I'll call it, um, and redirect that million to debt servicing, that million would buy us about fifteen point four million in debt proceeds, in borrowing proceeds. So the borrowing proceeds would have to fund the million that we took out of the contribution to capital, going from eight point nine down to seven point nine, uh, and then it would provide a remaining fourteen point four million to do, to deal with issues that council might have flagged during the, the process of looking at the capital projects, or some items that are percolating in the background to do with some different projects that are on the radar that, that council might want to consider. So it provides, uh, after funding the one million, uh, thousand, the one oh four five, one eighty-five, it would provide about fourteen point four million to do additional, additional things. So that leaves us with an ongoing base budget of seven point nine million, instead of eight point nine million, and, uh, and the ability to fund eleven point five million in two thousand and twenty. So that's, that's one, one idea. So we're substituting a million dollars of contribution to capital to a million dollars of debt, and leveraging that to get additional borrowing proceeds.
A million dollars of debt servicing?
Uh, debt servicing, correct, to, to, to purchase essentially fifteen point four million dollars worth of borrowing proceeds. Purchase probably isn't the right word, but I can't think of another leverage.
These are capital projects-
Right.
That would-
That it would, that would fund-
Have a longer life, that-
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, option two, uh, this is, this is that option, so reduce the contribution to capital by a million forty-five, and then add it back, debt servicing in the same amount, so there's no impact on the, on the three point eight-six. And this just says that, no impact on the three point eight-six, but we have permanently reduced our contribution to capital by that million dollars going forward. And we still haven't, in this scenario, we haven't touched the programs or the discretionary items. So here's the second example, um, is we do the, the exact same as the first, the first example, in that we purchase debt with the first one million forty-five, and then we, we leverage another million dollars by taking that out of the contribution to cap, to capital. Only this time, that second million dollars just goes to the bottom line. Only one million is used for debt servicing, um, and it will need to pay for, it will, the debt servicing proceeds will now need to pay for two million forty-five, one eighty-five, to leave us in the same shape. Um, and then the above scenario will leave thirteen point four million available to do other things. And it does reduce in a, it does result in a reduced rate of about point seven eight more percent less, sorry, than, than the three point eight-six. So that's another option. So one million to buy the same amount of debt as option one, and then one million that just is right off of the contribution to capital to result in a, in a decrease in the tax increase.
I got a question, Councilor Woodard?
Okay.
Yeah, this last line in the last couple of slides keeps coming up, uh, maybe you could explain that to us again. Still have nondiscretionary programs, uh, one point two-seven, so obviously that's service cuts, if that's not funded, is that correct?
Uh, yes.
Because it's labeled nondiscretionary?
Right.
And it used to be, I think, two point five or something?
Two point seven-two.
Two point seven-two. So does that mean that we're looking at making up that additional two point seven-two next year?
Uh, I'm-
Or that's eventually going to come, right?
Yeah, it would, it would definitely come back in.
We're deferring the problem, so are we seeing service cuts even at the one point two-seven, if we're to be funded, are we seeing service cuts within the two thousand and twenty budget year? Or are we somehow met, you're going to be deferring this necessary issue into next year and getting by for now, but even if, I'll just quantify my question now that I've pre-ambled it, even if we fund the one point two-seven, which used to be two point seven-two-
Correct.
Are we still looking at service cuts?
Uh, I will defer to Mr. Seffy on that one. Um, I believe that it's manageable in decreasing from the two point seven-two down to the one point two-seven. Um, it's, it's, it's a target in, in getting to, they're dealing with specific items, and actually, um, in, in our Q and A package, we have a list of all those items that are contained in the programs. So you'd be able to see what the types of items are and their funding envelope. So it is definitely managing within that funding envelope for the one point two-seven, it will be tighter, they'll have to manage it, and then once they get to their appropriate amount, it will be, it'll be much more consistent from year to year.
How do we get to the appropriate amount? That would be next year, presumably?
No, it's a number of years. Most, most of the programs are taking a number of years to get there, yeah.
Okay, so we're going to be looking at that going forward in the same way we're doing contributions to capital, we're going to increase that a little bit every year to get it to where it should be?
Correct, yeah.
Well, we could just fund the whole amount now, and then, and then it would be a healthy program, because I'm still trying to jive, how we're, how it was presented to us at two point seven-two, saying, if you don't fund this, there's service cuts, and then a week later, it's one point two-seven with no service cuts, how's that possible?
So I think, uh, the, first of all, the two point seven-two wasn't the end, wasn't the whole thing. So that was just at that point in time, that was two thousand and twenty. So that was, there were still amounts coming in future years. So it, it is, uh, it is, it was, um, for a program, say, that was going to take four years to get up to the, the appropriate amount, staff recognizing they can't put five million dollars on a line item, um, it's now going to, they're now going to do it over five years instead of four years, or over four years instead of three years. So they've, they've strung it out a little bit longer, one year longer, um, to get there, but these are items that they've identified as really eroding their base operating budgets, and they need to tackle some of these items to, to give them a, a face. One of them is the homeless camp cleanups, for example. They've taken on more and more predominance in terms of the costs to, to manage, and they can't do it sort of out of their regular baseline budget anymore. So they've identified this, this program, and they need to now fund it appropriately, and make sure that they're taken care of, of, as an example, homeless camp cleanups.
So if I'm going to look at the operating, overall operating budget, all departments for the five-year plan, and you've got tax increases on each one of those years currently, does that include incremental increases to programs? Or are we, or is that going to be coming in above those projected five-year numbers?
We've pulled these out and, and are showing them as separate and above from the baseline economic increases.
Baseline next year wouldn't include increases to these programs?
If we, whatever we, if we approve something this year, it will become part of the baseline next year.
Understand that, but in, like, the following year, because, because again, like last week, it was two point seven-two. So is it that, you know, we're stretching it out, are we going to be looking at program increases over and above the five-year plan that's in the operating numbers currently? Is there more coming next year? I'm trying to get a grasp on, on the, the scope of the problem over multiple years, not just this one year isolation.
Yes, it is over multiple years, yeah.
But what's the scope of the increases over five years that are, are not in that operating plan that you showed us, uh, a couple weeks ago? Maybe Mr. Backen can help, uh, focus my question to be phrased correctly, um, to try to understand the, the overall growing liability that's remaining unfunded at the one-two-seven.
So, uh, take it back one step, at two point seven-two, it was assumed, well, first of all, we have our, our base financial plan number, these numbers are all effectively in addition to that, number one. Number two, then, what's the difference between the two point seven-two and the one point two-seven is really what we'll call the amortization. Instead of being over, say, three years, it's going to be over five years, or maybe over seven years to build up to it. So it does defer some of our maintenance in some situations, or defer some of them, but it hopefully eventually catches up. Now, Karen, do you have the ultimate answer?
Yeah, so in, in most cases, so for example, the three point six four four, which was the first number we looked at, that was the two point seven-two percent. Um, the ne, the following year, so it was three point six year the first year, the, the next four years was five hundred and forty-four, three hundred and sixty, two hundred and ninety, and two hundred and forty-six. So it definitely dropped down for the next four years. The first year was the largest year. So what they've done is, is just spread that large three point six first year over, over the next, over a couple of years, instead of just all in that first year.
It helps me understand how it dropped, too, and then the, the five-year plan, the one, I mean, I went and looked at two thousand and nineteen, and the, the numbers that, for the five-year from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-three don't match what we're being shown this year, they're obviously changing. So as Mr. Backen alluded to, it's a, it's an evolving situation, would that be fair? And we hopefully resolve it, is that what I heard you say, hopefully?
Over the longer term, it may take a number of years, but it won't happen over one year, because that would, again, just delay the impact to a, a larger impact next year. They're doing it over a three-to-five-year span.
Thank you. Thanks. Counselor Ferguson?
Well, I think that, uh, Counselor Woodward answered a few of my questions. Can you go back to, uh, option one again, please? Okay, so, okay, option one, okay, there. Okay, so we have, from the two thousand and nineteen, the operating contribution to capital, eight point nine million, and that was, and that began in, I think, twenty fourteen or twenty thirteen?
It, it's been growing, um, by a little bit each year. Some years, we, uh, the roads would get five hundred thousand, and the next year, facilities would get five hundred, roads would get a little bit less, but it has been growing incrementally in the-
But it was a percentage from, from taxes, the contribution to capital, whether-
No, it, it was usually just a flat amount. I, I think what you're thinking about is the, there was a percentage of taxes that we were trying to establish for the road paving and the Capital Infrastructure Renewal and Replacement Reserve. We were trying to get a half a percent of taxes-
That's correct.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Okay, so, and, okay, so we're doing this, and it's the option one, and then you go to option two now, and, uh, one point six-six, three point eight, and that one, and now to option three. I'm getting you moving around, thank you very much-
Okay, no problem.
With the scenarios.
Yeah.
And, um, so basically, just go back one slide to your main option three strategy for tax increases, that's, okay, I guess, uh, option two is option three. So basically, you're saying the property tax, three point eight-six percent, plus a contribution or a reduced contribution, or that's it?
So reducing the contribution to capital by a million forty-five, and then adding debt servicing for the same amount.
Okay, so we're looking at 3.86 percent then, for this particular option?
As, as an example, yeah.
As an example. Now, obviously, we have to go over the, now, okay, now, back to the nitty-gritty, and I just wonder where we at, where we're at with things like, uh, I, I always look at it because it's one of our major parts of our budget, our CMP, um, the number of officers requesting versus how they come on stream, and how we indeed decide what we're gonna do with it. Plus, I know you're putting away for a rainy day fund. They've now has a union as of the end of, uh, the last quarter of 2019. We, and they'll be looking for some sort of an increase. We're putting away strategically for a rainy day for when that indeed happens.
We've been building that on, yeah.
Okay, good. And, um, so we haven't made a decision as per se, or maybe we have, as to what we're gonna do with officers, or how they're gonna be phased in as of yet. Is that correct?
The way they were presented, and, uh, what's built into the 3.86 is for officers starting October 1st.
Okay, but we still have to decide that, or the council has to look at that as well?
Still has to be decided.
Last year, I think, other members of council just suggested how we phase them in, but, uh, that's something we as a council have to decide, and all those matter regarding our-
Yes.
Thank you very much.
So Karen, perhaps just a, a brief time to pause, because I think you kind of glossed over it. One of the things that option one does is it actually lowers the contribution to capital, but it does allow a certain amount of additional, I guess, funding for capital projects, or presumably capital projects, because it allows us to borrow, I think you said 11 million dollars?
Uh, this, option one is the status quo, so the option two is the one you're referring to.
Sorry, option two?
Yeah. Option two will provide 15.4 million dollars in borrowing proceeds with, the rates changing all the time, but that's good enough for the discussion. And then we would have to fund what the reduction in the, in the contribution to capital would have funded, so the 1,045 will need to fund those out of the borrowing proceeds, which would leave about 14.4 million.
The 14.4 for option two. We then go to option three, we do the same process, but because there's nothing to fund from ongoing capital at that point, we have 14, plus we have an additional 15 million dollars that could be used for the capital program.
So this one is, we're, we're needing now to fund the $2 million drop in the contribution to capital from 8.9 down to 6.9, out of the borrowing proceeds of 15. So 15 minus the $2 million drop would leave approximately 13.4 million available.
Plus the previous 14 million?
No.
Okay, we need to, we need to explain that, because if we're dropping contributions to capital by 1 million and getting 14 million-
Yeah.
And by 2 million and getting 11 million, um, it's not-
We're not, with the second $1 million drop in the contribution to capital here, we are not procuring debt. This is just a drop in the contribution to capital to sort of attack the 3.86 percent.
But we could use it for debt if we chose not to fund anything else?
It could be used to fund debt, uh, debt in the same way the first million.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think that's the, the important thing to continue to show, is that it does create an opportunity if council does wish to do, does wish to pursue a significant capital project.
Yeah, that's why I say there, there could be a dozen, uh, options that could spin off of, of this thinking. So this is where the second $1 million did actually fall to the, to the bottom line and reduce the 3.86 down to 3.11. But we still haven't added anything in the way of programs or discretionary items at this stage. And we have eroded our contribution to capital base budget moving forward by the $2 million.
I have a question from Councilor Whitmarsh.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. So in, in this one, uh, this option three, so we are, um, reducing our contribution to capital by $2 million, and as a, uh, with that, there's, that frees up the ability to, to borrow with that, up to 16 million, of which some of that's used to fund that debt and reduce our tax burden. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
So the 16 million, which it turns out to here, 13.4, is that, do we have ideas of what we would use that for? Like, is that kind of, could be directed, for example, to the land assembly?
The 13, yeah, the 13.4 is totally, it's, it's either to fund items that you might have flagged in here that you want funded, or on, on a, looking on a bigger scale, to fund some projects that, um, that I know that are on council's mind in terms of-
Okay, so the 13.4 could be used to pay for, um, some of the items in the budget currently, or, or, well, I guess it's also in the budget, but a large item like the 67 million for the land assembly could be reduced of how much we have to borrow, because we've now, I guess, freed up this?
Uh, no, because that, that is, that is being funded from borrowing already.
Okay.
So this is actually additional borrowing to fund other capital items.
Capital items.
Yeah.
So, so in essence, what we are talking about doing is increasing the amount of borrowing to help reduce our tax rate?
This scenario does that, yes.
We'd be borrowing 13 million dollars?
Uh, so, oh, actually, actually, let me take that back. This scenario, um, it's not the, it's not the borrowing that helps reduce our tax rate. It's up here on the second-
Right.
The second million dollars. We're, we're just blank at reducing the, the, um, 8.9 million by a million dollars that we're not, that we're basically removing from the base.
Well, it's not borrowing that's reducing, it's a low, a lower contribution to capital.
Yeah, only the 1,045 is, is being to leverage borrowing.
Putting less in savings, if you call infrastructure savings, less in savings, and taking that reduction in our savings and putting it directly against our groceries.
Right, okay, but i, if we use the 13.4 million to reduce the land assembly borrowing costs, borrowing amount, would that, would that not help us?
Just be a different form of borrowing, because we're already borrowing for the land assembly. So then if we would borrow somewhere else to pay down the land assembly, it's still borrowing?
It'll be borrowing.
Right. So using this approach, we still are gonna have an additional 13.4 million dollars of debt on the books?
If this, if this was, if this was an option that was, was decided to do, this would, this would result in, in-
Adding 13 million dollars of debt, or 15 million dollars of debt onto the township's debt.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And this one is very similar to the last one, only instead of letting that second $1 million amount just fall off of the base contribution to capital and result in a tax increase, this one is now directing that million, second million dollars to fund some of the additional items that we currently haven't funded. So, uh, either the programs that, that are now at 1.27 percent, or the, um, the discretionary items, which are at 2.85 percent, which is a list of positions and contributions to capital and those kinds of items. So this one doesn't just let the $1 million fall off, fall out of the base and reduce, result in a tax decrease. It actually, so here's, uh, starting with the 3.86, we reduce the contribution to capital by 2,045, which is those original two items we looked at. And then we add debt servicing, bring it back to the 3.11 that was on the last slide, and then we add the $1 million going towards programs and the discretionary items. So the base, again, the base in this scenario isn't changing, but we have been able to fund some of, some of the programs and the discretionary items.
Thank you, Councilor Woodward?
Just want to clarify again, so they go back to the slide that was just up?
This one?
Yeah, the summary.
Yeah.
So we would, we would borrow money, um, increase our debt service, not, still not fund the discretionary programs of the 1.27, but we would be, we'd have the money, we'd have a couple million to fund some more project, or we'd have a lot, we had 15, I think you said, right?
Yeah, we would still have, actually, let's go back one more slide. We, we'd still have, levy the first million dollars to get this 15 million. Then we'd have to use this 15 million to pay for the capital projects that these two amounts would have, would have paid for, leaving the 13.4 million dollars remaining.
So we'd have 13 million left over that would be put at, potentially put aside for contributions to capital in future years?
Not contributions to capital, but capital projects themselves. So any, any items-
Hey, person, I don't, I, I understand the technical distinction, but, okay, we would fund capital projects with the money.
Because of, of it being a one-time source, you'd want to fund the, the one-time-
One-time, okay, all right. I just, so we would have 13 million in the bank-
Yes, correct.
Um, which would-
Cash.
Uh, offset, yeah, with cash, which would offset the borrowing bylaw, but we would not be able to, we would not want to and not be able to use it to still make up the shortfall of the 1.27.
No, because that would, that would be like using your line of credit to pay for your groceries, yeah.
So you go back to the summary slide again.
Yeah.
So option four, um, we're at 3.86, but still have that 1.27 unfunded.
Well, now we've been able to put, um, a three-quarters of a percent towards both of those items, both the programs and the discretionary items.
Okay, so that's what I wanted to clarify, so that, because you're adding debt servicing also, right? So, so you're reducing contributions, because you are funding the 1.2s, because it says here still have nondiscretionary programs, nondiscretionary items funded above. So you're at the 3.86 with that 1.27 funded with option four?
Correct.
Maybe you could have just said 1.27 is funded or something, um, but I, I appreciate-
I just don't want to lose the history of the numbers, sorry.
I appreciate clarifying this now, because I'm trying to get down to, you know, in which of the options is the 1.27 problem solved. And that's only in option four currently, is that correct?
So, uh, the, the next, the next option looks at just a, a double amount of 2 million. We could stop right here and just say the next option looks at everything you see here, only this would be, this would be three, adding additional million that we're dropping the contribution to capital by, and this would be 2 million to go towards programs and discretionary items.
Thank you. Councilor Kunst?
How long will we be, um, how long will that 15 million be on the books?
Uh, it'll, it would just be a, a cash balance until it's used. So it was, it's a source available for, to fund capital or one, one-time projects, and because it's a large amount, I would, I would suggest it's probably gonna be a capital project.
But repayment would be 20 years.
Okay, so it would be 20, 20 years, yes.
The borrowing, yes, sorry, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we would, we would have that 15 million on the books for the next 20 years?
Yeah, if, if, if we chose, we could be 15 or 10, but yes, it's long-term borrowing, correct.
Okay, so technically, if we continue to do this over the next, so that's, I guess, the, if that's the direction that we go, we could potentially have quite a sum. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
On that vein, just because it's a theoretical option, think of it this way, if one actually took the contribution to capital, reduced it, uh, by 6 million dollars, and there's some, some flow that comes from the projects you'd otherwise lose, that would allow you to borrow about 75 million dollars. If your capital program for the next, uh, five years was gonna be 75 million dollars, um, you could then actually sustain that, because during that five years, you could begin to build it back up at, say, a million dollars a year in your contribution to capital. Not recommended, it's simply as a mathematical play in terms of what you could do with the surplus funds.
Okay.
And this is the one that I just alluded to, option five, which is my final option, I believe, where we've actually taken the 8.9 down to 5.9, so instead of 1 million, it's 2 million here. And it's, that 2 million is being, in this, in this hypothetical situation, allocated to the additional items of programs and discretionary items. So that would leave us at, I haven't updated this slide, I apologize. It would leave us at the 3.86 percent. My bad. Yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't, uh, update that slide for the new numbers. So it would leave us at, at still at this amount.
Councilor Whitmarsh, do you have?
Yeah, just, uh, if we go back to that, the same slide here, but option five, looking, yeah, this one?
Yeah.
So it'd be a 3, 3.86, um, and at the bottom, we would then have funded 1 and 1/2 percent of the 4.12.
Correct.
So there'd still be 2.62 unfunded, but we'd be sitting at 3.93, and this would still, and this one would have us with fif, 13.4 million.
Correct.
Same thing, okay.
Uh, yeah.
Thank you.
Actually, sorry, 12.4 because of the additional 1 million.
Right, 12.4.
Yeah.
Okay, so 12.4, uh, available for capital projects.
Right.
But then over, but then required to pay that back over time, okay? Thank you.
Councilor Kunst?
Yeah, um, how did, how is what we did last year, is, is it any different than what, that what you're suggesting here in, you know, a couple of these options, where we sort of borrowed some to pay for?
Uh, last year, we didn't, we didn't deal with the base, um, we didn't deal with the base contribution to capital, we left it intact. Um, and we just, uh, partly through the year, we, we had a large borrowing, a large project that we identified, an opportunity to, to get the land assembly that was purchased, and, um, and a couple of others, and we borrowed for those mid-year. So it, we, last year, that 2019 was pretty much the same as the previous year, so we hadn't made a lot of, a lot of revisions to that amount of, amount that was available for capital. This is the first year that we're actually digging into the amount available for capital in a significant way.
Councilor Long?
Yeah, uh, uh, there's so many numbers, so can we go back, first of all, which option are you recommending?
Uh, this, these were, there's no recommendations here, and as, I think a couple of, of alternate options have even sprung off. This is just sort of a, uh, a little bit of a demonstration about how some decisions like this, how they impact the base increase, the base tax increase, and in terms of them providing money for capital, yeah.
Option five, because that, that has the least amount of contribution to capital, and maybe we're gonna say, well, we bought all kinds of land, and we've done all kinds of other cool things this, this term, so maybe we can reduce capital a little bit. I don't see a big star saying we're gonna be in trouble there, because we don't even know what that 12.4 projects are, really, do we?
No, they're not, they're unidentified at this stage.
So then if you go back to the other slide, which should be 3.86, you told us that that was the wrong number?
Correct, yeah.
Then, then to get, then that leaves us 2.62 unfunded. So we have to, so are we getting, if we're getting down to sort of a potential final number, is that 3.93 plus a 2.62?
So this, this is actually, the 3.86 is actually including $2 million worth of programs and discretionary items, so-
But it still, it says unfunded at the bottom, is 2.62, what's, what?
Yeah, so a part of, a part of the 4.12 percent has now, um, been dealt with in the last line of the top section. The, it says 3.93 there, but it's actually 3.86, so it's-
The 1.5 percent, that's in the blue?
Correct, yes, correct, yeah.
So that still leaves us unfunded, but, but it gets us halfway there, kind of thing, or?
Yes, yeah, partly there.
What did we have last year? What was the, the increase last year?
3.85.
And, um, then, and when we did last year, did we not have a five-year forecast? We, whenever we do our, our plan-
Yes.
That we've always projected, we, we very seldom actually hit them, but-
I believe it was 3.98.
Is what we predicted?
I'm going by memory, but Sam's looking right now, I can tell. But I believe it was a little, just a little bit higher than, than the, than year one. But we typically, when we're showing the, the future years, we don't include a whole bunch of discretionary items, we, we keep them pretty, pretty base, baseline items. So then each year, the items for consideration come up in terms of the discretionary items.
But on our, on the budget that we adopted and the public looked at, it showed projections of 3.9?
I, I believe it was 3.98 as, for base.
I'd like to get that, I figured maybe council could get that chart, I mean, if that's what we put out there, it'd be good to have it. Thank you. Councilor Whitmarsh?
Yes, thank you. Um, just following up on, uh, Councilor Kunst's question, I thought that, um, I thought last year, in order to redo, bring down the, the, the final property tax rate, I thought we did do some borrowing to reduce that as part of the budget process.
We did, we borrowed 1.9 million for MAP, but for a specific project. Yeah, we did, you're right, 1.9 million for MAP.
And, okay, and that was, um, so that, rather than, rather than putting that into the tax burden, we borrowed it, and that helped to reduce it to 3.86, you said it was?
Yeah, it was about, I think the whole project was about 5.3 million, and we funded it from a variety of sources, different reserves and the 1.9, so I apologize, you're right, that is true.
Okay, that, that's helpful, thank you.
Yeah. Sorry about that, Councilor Kunst.
Councilor Woodward?
Actually, I might, I might save some of my questions, looking ahead here, I might
Actually, I might, I might save some of my questions, looking ahead here, I might save some of these questions maybe till you get through the rest of the presentation. You're going to be reviewing a couple of other things in terms of other operating impacts, right, so maybe I'll wait, thanks.
So that, that, these slides were just meant to give an, an idea about how creative we can get in terms of how we, how we get through this year. None of those are recommendations, they're just all ideas. And with the, the boring proceeds, th- this is just, again, meant to provide some ideas for the boring proceeds. We could fund a portion of the, of the la- major land acquisition priorities that might be out there. We could fund additional unfunded regular capital in the current year, so those would be items that we flagged in here that we wished could, could be funded and aren't. We could fund regular high priority capital over the next few years, so I think somebody had mentioned about, actually Counselor Kunst had mentioned, could we put that money aside? Actually, I interpreted what you were asking, you were asking about the term of the loan, but I interpreted, um, we could put that money aside and use it for two or three years, unfunded items in the regular capital budget. Or we could reduce, direct it towards the deficit in the land capital reserve, et cetera.
I have a question, and just as we're going to ruminate through all of this information that you've given us and, and think about it over the next few days. The, so if we go with an option where we now have some extra money to deal with some of the unfunded capital items, how are those decisions going to be made? Is staff going to go review their lists and say, okay, this is something that really should get done, and give us some recommendations of what should be funded? Are you asking council to come back and say, hey, we've got no bucket of money, we want to allocate to some things? But my feeling is the staff will probably have a better sense of what's, what's more urgent.
Probably take what, what has been talked about in the sessions and has been flagged. And, uh, Mr. Becken, did you want to add to that?
And I.
Well, depending on council's direction, we would simply take the excess funds, allocate them to the divisions, divisions in proportion to our traditional allocation of capital, and then the next priorities would come along, unless council directed that they wish to have another project undertaken. And you may recall from our priority sessions, we had a number of capital projects, so we could, council could direct instead to apply those funds to one of those capital projects as a priority, or matching funds, or whatever the direction was.
And so, you know, as, as I was in here for the last two meetings, the budget meetings, there are items that were flagged by council, I take it, that would then fall into this and give us a better sense of what we can do.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
And these, I just put these slides up at the end of the, they, they seem kind of inconsequential now, we've seen them already in the operating budget, but this is the operating impact of the capital that is currently included as in the funding envelopes. So these are full, oh no, these are in thousands, so seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, is that right, Karen? Yeah, seven hundred and thirty-one thousand will be added for the operating impact of capital that we've approved, or that we've, sorry, not approved, included as above the line. And then this is the contribution, and these are, these are full dollars, from the assets that we will inherit from the development community, we'll be adding a hundred and forty thousand dollars to our base budgets to take care of it. Just, just, just a small reminder that there are operating components to the capital projects. And then this is just the resolution to move us to the next meeting, so that's what I have today.
All right, uh, are there any further questions of Ms. Sinclair before we consider this resolution on the presentation? Counselor Woodard?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I don't know if, I don't know what direction you meant by that, Mr. Mayor, are you gonna, do you want to have, ask all of our questions, and then we'll, we'll discuss it a bit, or then no more questions?
Well, this is the time for questions of staff, and then we'll, we'll entertain a motion just to refer this to, um, to further special budget meeting, so.
Your intention is not to try to discuss this more today?
No, no, oh, I don't know, where are we with the presentation, I'm following staff.
This is the end of the, of the capital presentation.
That's right, so, so at this point, if council have any further questions of staff regarding anything in the presentation, this is the time to address a question, we're not debating anything, we're just.
We do have, um, we do have a question and answer document, where we're going to approach this today. Okay, so, uh, once this, this presentation is concluded, we do have the question and answers from the previous two sessions, like we typically put up on the screen and, and just roll through it, um, and we have copies for everybody. So once we're done with, with dispensing of this resolution and any questions that we have, then we will try and get a start on this.
Okay, so just, we'll have one question, then, just not sure what, what the plan is here. So, um, now that we've gotten both presentations, is there an overview presentation coming? We, we, last year, we got an overview presentation, which showed household impact, townshipal angling in relation to other municipalities, which property classes are paying for the base tax increase and stuff like that. There was, there was a more information in a fourth present, third presentation, is that, fourth presentation, is that, is that coming this year?
There, there was an overview in advance, because last year, um, because of the election, we did everything all together at once, so we didn't, rather than have all the same slides in two presentations, some of the, some of the introductory slides, we had an overview short presentation to just introduce the process. Then we had the two presentations, and I think what you're thinking of is we had then a session where we brought back the other four years. So, which is called the draft five-year financial plan, we usually do that in a, in a report format, so we bring that to council in a report format.
Yeah, I may have labeled it overview on, on, in my files, but it, it did have slides that we don't have yet, such as household impact, other municipalities.
Right, sorry, I'm, I'm with you now, hundred percent, we, we didn't include those in, in the, in these presentations, because we knew that there was going to be quite a bit of discussion, and that we would be possibly even defaulting to one further.
I, I don't need a pie chart showing household impact presented to me, you can just maybe send it to us if that saves time. Uh, just, I just wanted to be curious if that information is still coming, or, or no?
Yeah, it would be.
It would be.
Yeah, either in the form of a report or, or in the next presentation.
Next presentation, okay. I just wanted to ask one, one more thing about the, the debt servicing that you showed us on the twentieth. If I recall the number, it was approximately three million and fifteen thousand? That was the debt service burden for all of, some other projects, railways, and then the land assembly, MAP, and I think there was one other in there.
Yeah.
That's the debt service that we've added in the two thousand twenty budget?
Right.
And that's, that's roughly how much, I think it was two percent, something like that?
Uh, it was three, three million fifteen, um.
It's like two point something percent, it doesn't matter, it was over two percent. So would it be fair to characterize that, that because we, as a council, added those debt service items, and the previous council as well, now we're, we're dealing with that debt service burden, that that's what's placing the pressure on these other components of the budget? So therefore, we're contemplating borrowing money to solve the fact that we borrowed money, would that be a fair summary?
I, I think what's been happening over the last few years is that the, the capital budget has getting, has been getting more and more, we, we, it's been restrained more and more. And so I think what's happening is it's just getting to the point now where every year, we're carrying sort of our, what I call our little red wagon full of projects that we didn't get done in the previous year's budget, bringing it forward, and they're starting to compile. And I think we're just feeling that increasing pressure on the capital program. I, I'm not sure that it's entirely from, from this borrowing, but I think it's, it's a bigger, it's a bigger number than this.
Three million would certainly help, given some, certainly some of the slides that we saw, so maybe, maybe, I mean, I don't, I can characterize it that way. I didn't know if it was, from an accounting perspective, fair to characterize it that way, that if we, that debt service didn't exist, we wouldn't necessarily need these additional options that contemplate borrowing more money to solve the fact that we borrowed money.
Gotcha.
All right, thanks.
If I could just interject, that's, that's partially true, but we can also look at that, uh, I guess, funding that we're using is actually to acquire assets we wouldn't otherwise have, so I don't think we're actually borrowing money to borrow, borrow, to pay our debts. We're actually reducing our savings account, if you will, by having it service debt that we've incurred to acquire assets we couldn't otherwise incur. Now, from a public relations perspective, I guess one could characterize it differently, but it's, our attempt is to kind of keep it rational, and our point in this presentation was to say, in an extreme world, we could even go further, we could even go further and take more money out of our savings to go and actually service a debt if we wanted to buy something. In common parlance, we may decide to reduce our savings to buy a house, something like that. But ultimately, we're a bit nervous, because not only do we have to buy the house, we have to maintain the house, and as we look at maintaining our houses collectively, they're getting more expensive to do so. When I say houses, I mean roads and pipes and rec centers and all those things.
Yeah, let me clarify, I mean, I, I'm, I'm not saying that, I'm, I'm a little concerned that others are going to say that. And I think it's pretty easy to make that conclusion, and I, I'd like to find a, even when the presentation and the Q and A is officially over, find out what our plan is, to look at some additional options that, that may be out there, and it may be appropriate to have Mr. Becken or yourself sort of frame a possible timeline to look at some other options, because we still haven't addressed the RCMP funding, the bylaw officer requests, and a couple of capital projects, such as Yorkson Community Park, which is not acceptable to me that we're not following through on that original program to, to do every, you know, some portion of it every year. And it's not acceptable to me that having borrowed money for assets, as valuable as they are, and as supportable as that, it's, that decision was, not acceptable to me that some of these other requests, such as RCMP and Yorkson Community Park and other important projects, remain unfunded, and that, that there must be other ways to look at that other than more debt, thank you.
Worship, just to pick up from that point, then, the original question was, where do we go from here? And, and what we're looking for really now, I think, is a couple of options. Uh, in the very immediate term, Karen has circulated a list of questions and answers that were asked previous to today. We could deal with that, and in fact, we'll.
Carm's going to circulate it.
We'll circulate them now, so you have them, and we can take a moment to review them, to see if there's any supplemental. Some years, we go through them in detail, I think this year, we would circulate and let you digest them, and we could come back to them as, as you see fit, if there's any further questions. From that process, then, we can answer questions, then, as to the operating, as to the capital, as to the questions and answers that have been asked. Again, this isn't the finality of this process, we're looking to actually continue this discussion further. Following, um, those questions and answers, if council had any, any debate or direction they wish to provide, we would certainly accept that. As I mentioned, uh, previously, we've had some good dialogue with individual members of council, either in person or in writing and questions and whatnot. So from that, we can begin to frame things a little bit, but we certainly would welcome additional comments or, or options or thoughts in terms of what the priorities would be, and that would lead us then to the next session, and the one thing we have to do for the next session, then, is determine when that should be. At the present time, we're very sensitive to the volume of materials on, on February the tenth, so we were thinking perhaps of a, a couple-hour session to start things off, uh, as you know, it's a full meeting council day. In the past, we started at ten-thirty, that made for a very long day, we were thinking perhaps a twelve-thirty start on the tenth, but we may have to reserve your calendars for further meetings that week, if we wish to pursue, to complete, I guess, with the revised budget timeline, and maybe that's what we should go over, is the revised budget timeline. And then after all of that, we'd have the resolution to refer this to an additional, I guess, discussion, presentation, et cetera, and when, knowing what date that would be, that could be inserted in the resolution, and then I think that would be effectively it for today. Does that seem sensible, Karen?
Yeah, and I would, I just really would like to take a quick opportunity, if I could, to thank Carm and everybody here who contributed to this document. It's a lot of information pulled together in a very short amount of time, and of course Denise had, had to corral her team, she's got the biggest team in terms of contributing, so thank you guys all so very much for helping with that.
Am I okay, that's on Mr.?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you, so specifically related to the schedule, so if we head in that direction in regards to a couple of hours on the tenth, if I were to present a memo to you and a draft form, and to have you vet that prior to going to council, what, what date do you think you would need that to, to prepare, to potentially review that with council on that Monday, to try to solve some of these challenges in a, in a way other than debt? Would that be Wednesday, Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, maybe Wednesday I could present that? All right, so I might consider that, um, to try to move this along, Mr. Becken, do you think, is there some other prerequisites to doing that? Similar to the process last year, where, where I submitted a memo to council, is there any improvements that you can suggest to that process, having gone through it last year?
I thi- I think I would encourage anyone to do that, um, we can certainly take them verbally, but written certainly helps, because it's easier to ma- make sure there's no mistake in the transcription, so that works fine. It's really the concepts we're looking for, from the discussions we've had to date, we're getting a bit of a framework. I think there is, uh, maybe a few things we need to do at the beginning of the next session, is just to answer some of the questions that still may be outstanding, have come from today. One, for example, is what other communities doing, I think we have that information, it's always a good place to provide a context. But after that, then it really becomes, uh, council provides us with some direction, and even now, we'll go away and try to come up with some, I guess, something that is realistic options, perhaps a recommendation, it may be a bit early for that, but we want to try to do that. But we should probably review the timeline, I think, Karen, in terms of what's out there.
Right.
Some more questions, I just, as we're discussing, I, um, you know, was, was thinking, we're, you know, we're talking, we're venturing into an area where we haven't gone too much before, I know in previous years, uh, we've had great presentations from staff regarding some of the shortfalls in our, say, our road maintenance, and, um, and the path we're going, the increased cost, and the amount of revenue coming in does not match that cost. I know we've looked at increasing some of the reserves and putting money aside, now, a small percentage per year to address that in the future years, so we're not incurring so much debt, and the same with the, um, the capital, cap, where the, was it the?
Infrastructure renewal reserve.
Renewal fund, same thing, it's recognizing that you buy, and I'll wear the turf field today for one and a half million dollars, and ten or twelve years replacing it, and, and recognizing that we put some money aside for those sorts of things. So we have done some of those things in the past, so now we're looking at, um, bringing on some debt to deal with some of our capital, which, um, you know, the municipalities do, and, and I know that Metro Vancouver, it's, it's, it's a big part of how they handle those major infrastructure projects that they have to go through, is that there's, uh, a part of it is funded by debt, part of it is funded by the reserves that they have and money that they have, that they have put aside. But there they have a policy, and I'm wondering if it's maybe not this time round, but we need, it might be that we need to look at a policy moving forward that would help guide council on how much debt is acceptable, and not have a s- a situation where, you know, we're scrambling to, to, um, to pay, you know, shortfalls in previous years, like, you know, I don't want to shortchange the next budget, or the next council, or five, ten years from now, by not doing our job today, and it might be sometimes we have to bite the bullet and increase the taxes to where they should be, to cover some things that are, are really needed for our municipality, so it's a big discussion, and, um, you know, I don't want to, you know, for the sake of me looking good, saying we're going to have low, low taxes, but all you do is shovel it on to the next council. And, and so it may be that debt is the way to, to go, to cover some of these capital, but maybe, I don't know if you can comment on a policy, whether municipalities do, what level is acceptable, and, and that we have some sort of guidelines, rather than just saying, well, we're going to do this today and not tomorrow.
No, this topic has come up in a few different ways, um, Counselor Arneson has talked about the need for a strategic borrowing framework, which, which would be a debt and borrowing policy. Counselor Richter talked about the financial sustainability review, which would be part and parcel of that kind of a policy as well. And then there was a discussion about the need for a long-term financial plan, which, which would be like a ten-year financial plan, as opposed to the, really, we do a five-year plan, but the really, the focus is in the first couple of years. So all three of those things would dovetail together to, to make what you're, what you're talking about, I believe, in, in a good plan to move forward, and, and that, that is one of the things Metro Vancouver does, is they do have a debt policy, uh, looking at fifteen, twenty, thirty years debt, they have reserves and surplus policy, so we definitely could look at, at that.
Because it, because at those meetings, we can see the impact twenty years, and we know this is where we're going, that those projects are coming along, there's, you know, and.
It probably would make sense to do it outside of the budget process as well, when, when we're not feeling the pressure to.
That's right.
You know, we're just sitting back, taking a step back and, and looking at it, looking out.
Oh, appreciate that, thank you.
Worship, just to pick up on that, we actually have a number of policies that do guide us, that I think it's better to say need to be reworked or revamped to present circumstances, because they are fairly old in terms of perhaps a decade or so, and, and the situation has changed a lot in that decade from our growth patterns and where we've seen the need for infrastructure. So I wouldn't say develop in some cases, I would say revisit some of the policies we have. There's also the need for some longer-term planning, but just a caveat for council to take into account, that if we did come up with a ten-year plan, that called for, say, three and a half percent tax increases over the range of the ten-year plan, it's a great planning tool for staff, but then council will be faced with the fact that they're pledging to increase taxes by thirty-five percent. Those are the things that concern us a great deal in terms of going forward, because it's not a fair label, but these labels do sometimes occur. So we'd be seeking your guidance then in terms of the right balance for some of these things, so that they don't become, uh, challenges in terms of predictive, instead of simply being just estimates.
Counselor Long?
Thanks, yeah, I guess we have the timeline in front of us, so I'm confused about the open houses, are we, you know, we're going to proceed with that. I imagine you're going to have this discussion anyway, Worship, but I was also curious about the memo situation. So council's supposed to be sending memos directly to staff, or will, will council send them to all of council, is it part of the package?
Thank you for that, our, we're simply, simply asking for input at this stage, as we began the process, we underestimated the time it would take to complete these presentations, but the discussion has been very thorough and fulsome, and we're thankful for that. What we're looking for, then, is any further comments you may have, so we could take them verbally, but our concern is transcription. But you raise, do good, raise a, raise a good point, if we take them in email form or memo form, whatever it may be, we are going to circulate those to the rest of council, so we have them completely transparent in terms of what the suggestions are. So keep that in mind as we go forward, we would do so with the verbal comments, but remember, it'll be our transcription of what we think your suggestion was as we go forward, so we can have a record, so we can discuss those at the, at future sessions.
You must bet on writing then, for sure, okay, and then, Worship, I imagine you're going to go through this, this timeline here, because how do we have a budget meeting on Monday in an open house that night?
Right.
So, anyway, I'll leave that to you, yeah.
So, one thing that, that we did last year was we combined the February twenty-fourth and the March second, um, meeting. So we, we brought the results for the public consultation together at the same time as we brought the other four years. The public consultation session is typically on the one year, on two thousand twenty, so it's everybody, uh, everybody that comes, takes a look at the boards, and it's what, what we proposed for two thousand twenty. So once that open house has happened, we can compile, compile the results, and we can prepare the, the other four years of the five-year financial plan, and bring that on March the second, which would definitely provide us to have, have an open house somewhere in between March the second and February tenth. If we're having a meeting on February tenth, obviously, we're not having the open houses that day. We could have the open houses on the twenty-fourth?
Or on a non-council day.
March second is not, okay, so we'd have to shift it, I think what we did then is we shifted it down, we shifted everything down, one, from March ninth on, and we would bring the results of the public consultation and the draft financial pl- plan on March ninth. That's right, thanks, Carm.
There's time to do all this, the open houses, um, they're based on, you know, input on what has been presented to council to date.
Right, yeah, council has to be comfortable, right?
That's right, okay.
With the amount that's going.
Okay, Counsel Ferguson?
What's happened since I pushed the button, but I think we've, uh, you know, with about half an hour ago, we've, we've had a lot of discussion. So, um, next Monday, we may or may not have open houses, or we're, we're hoping to.
We won't, next Monday, we won't.
Okay, we won't, so that's been all moved up for the twenty-fourth, is that, we're looking for open house? Depending on what council says or does.
Karen, I think you had a revised schedule, maybe didn't make it into the presentation, but in terms of the consultation and, and the open houses, because there was some discussion, and I know why it's not here, is because we were actually thinking of having the open houses on non-council days. Traditionally, we've had them on this council day and the day after, and give us much more time to have them on non-council days, it opens it up a lot. But can you outline the thoughts that we discussed previously in terms of time?
And they don't have to be on a Monday, Tuesday either, they could be on a Wednesday, Thursday, Thursday, Friday. But I, I do believe that what we did discuss is what Carm has reminded me of, is, is pushing everything down from March ninth. And, uh, yeah, I'll have to drop that up and get it out.
Carm just said that the open houses, we're looking at the eighteenth and nineteenth to answer Counsel Ferguson's question.
Yeah, okay. Okay, also, Mike, I just wanted to follow through with the fact that, uh, you know, we still did, uh, I know that other, Counselor Woodward and others have mentioned the fact that we did have a typical home, and also the impact on different tax areas, because there are some folks that got caught with different taxes, I don't know how that worked or something, uh, either through the assessment or something else. I'm not sure if that impact will be so great this year.
Yeah.
But we still have to be aware of that, typical, how we, our growth, how the growth looks like, and how the other line entries came up, so people can look and see, and as well as council, have an overview as to where we're at.
For sure, we didn't want to bring that at this stage, because we still are not at a, I don't believe we're at a rate that council's comfortable with, so we wouldn't want to hard code it into a, into a representative household.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Counsel Woodard?
I just want to clarify again, it sounds like Counselor Long's really looking forward to another memo. to another memo from me. So I wanted to just confirm again that the process that I feel is appropriate, and maybe council can ask for a different one, is that if I've got some suggestions that are complex and intertwined, that it would make sense to have you and Mr. Becken confirm that they're even possible prior to presenting them even publicly, because I assume anything I send to council, it's a public document. To be very careful that we're, we're positioning and presenting ideas that are valid and is acceptable to accounting practices and are even possible to begin with. And I think that's the process we went through last year. So I think if someone has a problem with that process again, if I send some ideas for you, to Mr. Becken, to you and yourself to confirm or accept, I don't necessarily want them to be made public. And I think that's the concern. I would prefer to have a fully vetted concrete proposal for council to consider. And if others have such proposals, I think that would be great. I would look forward to seeing those in a fully vetted, concrete form, vetted by you and presented to you, sent by us, to us, by you, potentially as soon as next Monday, a similar process we went through last year, beyond borrowing more money. Thanks.
Just, just a comment. We can probably clarify that.
Be great.
The, the, I think the confusion exists over the documents being distributed. When they're final documents, if you will, ready for the circulation, that's what we circulate. Throughout our, our preparation of memos or assisting council, whether it be notices of motion or whether it be memos, if they're still in draft, if someone says, well, I'd like to move a motion to suspend the law of gravity, we'd have a discussion about that and suggest that's perhaps not the best way. Perhaps we could instead look at ways to mitigating the impact of gravity on our infrastructure, as an example. That would be some, one of the changes we'd be making. So we want to make sure it has some theoretical possibility. So I think what you're saying is, do we circulate all drafts from all council members? And no, we don't. We circulate them once they're actually what council members propose to actually send to council. So we have that information, but we know the thought processes are interactive. And sometimes, like staff, there's good thoughts and thoughts that one wishes not to circulate because they were just that, thoughts.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on that because I think that that process was just questioned. So I'm glad that that's been clarified, that we have that ability as individual counselors to have ideas vetted by, by the staff prior to them being made public. And I did forget to mention that the 10-year strategic borrowing plan that Counselor Anderson's, would, would actually have me raising taxes by a lot more than 35% over 10 years because it's compounding. So you left that part out. It's probably more like 50% or 55% over 10 years. Thanks.
Counsel Long? Yeah, so this is great that we're clarifying this, because I think maybe Counsel Woodward has to get his stuff in a little bit earlier than Wednesday then, because if, because I think we'd like to see the finished product and time to digest it also. So maybe, so when he asked earlier if Wednesday was okay, you said, fine, but I mean, maybe it's not, right? I mean, I'll leave it to you. But I, I heard what you're saying, and I appreciate what's all been said. We don't want to be having drafts flying all over the place. But I would like to have some time to, to look at, at whatever you've come up with and before Monday. So shall we, when you're ready to move along, I guess, Worship, we could make that motion? Is that means we're going to go to 12 o'clock on Monday?
I'll just get one more.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. There was one more speaker. Okay. So that's great. And I, I think the, the whole gist of this, this last discussion is staff welcome input, council welcomes input. If anybody has any good ideas, put them through. And of course, as soon as you possibly could, but I understand it always, always takes some work. But certainly, it's a process, it's a council process. We're, we're trying to get some good ideas, and everyone's ideas are valid. And we'll see what, what comes out on the council table. So, next step, is that motion to, you need a motion from us to move things along? And-
Yes.
There we go. So I would entertain this motion. Is there a mover?
So a mover, but we're going to put in the time, right?
I don't know if we need to do the time. That's not in this motion. Mr. Becken, just talking meeting times, it's something that myself and Mr. Becken will determine.
I think that this captures the intent of it, but I'll tell you what staff are thinking, which is that we'd probably start on 12:30 on Monday, go to 2:30 depending on the heaviness of the agenda, then start our regular sessions after that, and we'll try to structure for a bit of a break.
If we make the motion now, we'll have less-
Sure. If, sure, if it, if it helps. But then we're locked in, and Mr. Becken might need some flexibility.